Sandy Roca, please.
Councilmember Stacy Green.
President.
Councilmember Kim Green.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Susan Tavallaro.
Here.
Mayor Ken Palofini.
And I am here as well. We'll move to public business from the floor. There's a little bit of a misleading statement in our public business. Now's the time for the public to speak on the item, on the agenda only. So if you have anything you want to speak before we start our public hearing, now's the time to do so.
All right, did I understand that right? This is public comment, period?
Public comment, period, yes.
I'm getting more and more...
Name and address, please.
What?
Name and address.
Ken Nelson, Oak Ridge and Hammond, one and a half miles from here. Or from South Weed, I should say. I go to South Weed a lot, I use it, and I just came from the taco truck there. And the trash, is there anything we can do to have a once-a-month public works employees kind of keep up with the trash? It's pretty, it's almost depressing sometimes. I went behind the taco truck and there's quite a homeless camp going on there with bicycle parts and he's pretty resourceful. But anyway, that's my concern, and I wanted to say that. I don't know if once a month, somebody could take a truck and patrol around and clean it up, or, but it would present a better face to our travelers, not to mention our neighbors.
Good point, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, please?
Time for public comment, addressing the truck stop?
Yes, truck stop only. You can approach, you can do it now, or you can do it during the public hearing.
Record and one isn't?
Nope, all on record, your choice.
I'll speak.
Hi, my name is Mike Savarice. I live at 316 Pony Trail in Mount Shasta. I first came here 1981, going to COS. I've been a schoolteacher here in Mount Shasta for 31 years, and I've seen South Weed kind of grow. And now, you know, I see homeless people, I've seen prostitution, women coming out of trucks. I've seen the crime element from people that just, that I know that work at Grocery Outlet. I've got friends that live on Sugar Pine. And this proposed truck stop, according to my understanding, is going to be on the west side of the freeway, and there's people on Sugar Pine there. And this is, I believe it's just going to grow. You know, you build it, they will come. But in this case, it's an element that I think would be detrimental to the citizens of Weed and people in South County in general, because it's just going to bring a real negative element. A lot of people live in this area for the natural beauty and just the light pollution in the sky and the noise would detract from that. Recent value of the homes, I believe, would also be impacted, especially with the people on Sugar Pine. And it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the proposed truck stop, the parking, will be in the rear. And I heard that that's not according to city ordinance. I don't know if that's true or not. But if it is in the rear, that's where, you know, if the store is in front, you're going to have a lot of elements spreading out into the woods, because it's basically all woods out there, and you've got residences really close. And I know if I lived there and I had young kids, or just my wife might be at home, if I was to go away, I'd be really concerned. So succinctly, I just really hope that the city council really looks at this matter carefully and looks at how is it really going to benefit the quality of life for the citizens of Weed in South County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
My name's Matt Palladay, Shasta Meadow View. I agree with both these gentlemen that just spoke. My wife and I are the ones that sent the letter to you, Mr. Mayor, and to Mr. Ron Stock with all the trash and the bottles full of urine and the truck tires and the windshield wiper bottles laying out, shoot, ever since we moved here two years ago, that's been going on, on the side and over behind Grocery Outlet. Who knows what else they're doing out there? But we know that the homeless people aren't the ones that are buying the windshield wiper fluid and filling up the Gatorade bottles full of urine and all the fast food stuff. I would plead with the city of Weed to try to go high when the rest of the country is going low. You know, we have a, I don't know if anybody up there believes in climate change or not, but fossil fuels are a huge part of it. And I know that they will build this truck stop someplace else if you say no. But it's just the integrity of Weed. You guys have an opportunity at this point in time to lead by example and say, "No, we are not going to do this just for the money and the greed behind it." Not saying that you gentlemen or you ladies up there are greedy or not. I'm just saying that there's other ways to create revenue for this town that are going to lead for the rest of this county, the rest of the state, and the country. And another statement I wanted to say is that if I'm not mistaken, a truck size of this size and this caliber is the first one, I believe, in the nation to be this close to any residential neighborhood. I don't know if anybody's taken that in effect or not, or in fact, but, you know, again, these are going to be the things that Weed will be looked at. Once this is voted through, the city of Weed is going to own it. This is going to be the five of you up there, your legacy, that you're going to have to live with for the rest of your life. And you're going to have to explain this to your children and your grandchildren why this went through, if things go wrong. If there's prostitution that happens, we talked about it last time I spoke, Mr. Mayor. I told you that they have, you know, there was a shooting at a truck stop, and you said, "Well, there was a shooting at a church, and there's nothing you can do about it." You cannot put the truck stop in. Thank you very much.
If you clap, I will end the public comment. Thank you.
My name is Mary Beth Granberry. My address is 8635 Aspen Drive in Weed. And I'm speaking on behalf of the truck stop, but as a retired registered nurse who has both worked in hospice and in substance abuse, that it's a very bad idea for this community. In the 1970s, I wrote the story of the researcher who got lead out of our gasoline. His name is Bill McAnally. He worked for the EPA at the time. And he got the head of the EPA fired and her assistant in prison because they were shredding documents on the effects of petrochemicals and lead in our gasoline. And those studies are now being replicated after many, many years after the destruction. And believe it or not, her name was Ann Gorsuch, and she's our, she was the head of the EPA in the 1970s. I think it was like '79, '78, '79. Anyway, petrochemicals are the leading cause of death today. And it's not been, it's, if you look behind the research, you will find it. My immune system has been extremely affected. I can't even put gas in my car with all the fumes from the area. So I need a smaller gas station to put gas in my car. And I consider myself the canary in the coal mine on this. So I do respect the people that have talked about the vagrancy, prostitution, other menaces. But I think health is the one that will live with us the longest. And the more petrochemicals we put into this area, the sicker we will be. And we have, like in Weed, I mean in Mount Shasta, they have electric pumps. And you go to the, you know, they're all lined up there. There's no harm to that. We're not breathing anything. We're not touching anything. So I say to you and plead to you, on a public health perspective, do not put Love's Truck Stop in Weed. Thank you.
Jim Streegel, 2601 North Old Stage Road. Like has been said before me, there will be a problem with vagrants, with trash, all kinds of pollution, the air pollution. About one-third of the days, we have a soft north wind blowing, usually the prevailing winds from the south. But about 100 days a year comes in from the north. That will blow the diesel fumes up right over the neighborhood on the hillside behind Love's. And unlike other smells, diesel fumes are toxic. They have carcinogens. The residents there shouldn't have to be exposed to that kind of pollution. And between the pollution of the air, the crime increase in prostitution and drugs, which will happen, the increased risk of fire danger from having all those people around the woods area and the trucks. And I understand Ron Stock saying that a property owner has the right to develop his property within the zoning. For the most part, that's true. But unless it, if it adversely affects the neighbors around them, that's what this meeting here is about tonight. And to try and put it in terms, I'm not sure where you all live, but if you had a nice house on some property that you bought adjacent to some agricultural zoned acreage, and you built your house there with your life savings because you like the serenity and the open spaces, and then somebody comes along and says, "Oh, I want to put a pig farm on this property, 100 acres of hogs." It's going to be upwind of view. You would have a whole different view of the situation. Because you, when you, if you're downwind from a pig farm, you can't even breathe. At least that's not toxic aroma. It's not like diesel. And I just implore you when you...
I have lived down, been downwind of a pig farm.
Yeah. And so, I'm just saying, you can't help, when the wind, when the wind blows, Sue, when the wind blows a certain way, it makes you gag. You just, and so I'm just saying, when places vote, think about the people that are going to have to live close to there. And karma can be an evil mistress, and it can sneak up on you. And if, you know, you approve this, there's room on the east side for this development. I was reading the environmental impact report today. Alternative number three says it can be put on the east side just past the pilot station. There's plenty of room there. Don't spoil this beautiful area on the hillside, because once you go there, you can't go back. And if you pass it, you might step out of your back door someday and, "What's that I smell in the air?" It's pig manure, and then you're cooked.
Quickly, didn't they say the same thing about cannabis? And I just wanted to point that out.
Yes, I've got property that I hope to develop in Weed here with the possibility of cannabis warehouses. And I will respect the neighbors who are downwind from the operations. That's why they require odor hardware on your building to cut, to keep the smell inside and stuff and to filter it. So I'm just saying, for your kids' sake and grandkids' sake, and especially for the neighbors who are going to lose property value, please vote this down. And maybe Love's can compensate them with paving the road up to, for about a mile. That might be some compensation if they go through with it, but we'll see. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Gina Renee Palladay, and I live at 425 Shasta Meadow View. And my husband just spoke. Our home is one of the homes that's within 300 feet of this proposed site. And we got a letter in the mail from you. I understand that you guys take time out of your lives to be here, and you must really care about this community. It takes a lot of integrity to do what you do. And I'm respectfully asking you to also respect the integrity of your neighbors by not putting this Love's Truck Stop in the most beautiful part of Weed. Weed doesn't have very many beautiful areas. This is one of the most beautiful areas in Weed. And when you decide to put a truck stop in this area, your decision tonight, I respectfully would just like for you to understand that all of us are very concerned, because we know that it's one, it's a one-day decision for you. However, you are putting your mark. As my husband said, this is your legacy. And if you decide to put this truck stop there, you can look at me when I'm talking to you, Mr. Mayor. If you decide to put this truck stop in, it will never go away. And you're going to have to sleep with that every night, especially if we have another fire break out, like just happened four years ago, right here in your community. I would think that you have enough integrity to be on this board, to be on this council, that you really do care about your neighbors, and we are all your neighbors. And we are just asking for a little consideration when you're making this monumental decision, because this decision doesn't end here. You are going to be putting your mark on Weed for decades, because once a truck stop goes in, it's never going to be anything but a truck stop. And Weed will be known as a filthy truck stop town. And the only reason people are going to want to come here is to fill up their car with gas and see the pretty view. And in turn, you are making the lives and the sanctity of our health and safety and well-being is at risk because of the tax dollars that could still be generated if this truck stop was put on the other side of the highway, where it's safer, where there aren't the residents that are going to be impacted every single day with noise and with pollution and health concerns. And it's my understanding that you chose to be in this position because you want to protect the well-being and the health and safety of your neighbors in your community. And I honor you for that. This is a big deal. This is a very, very, very big deal. And I don't know if you are really grasping the impact it's going to have on our lives and on your life and on the town of Weed for years and years and years to come. So I just respectfully ask you to please take into consideration more than what your city manager is telling you. Because the lives of the people that you are elected to protect and serve, and protect our health, protect our safety, protect our well-being, is really in jeopardy here, and you have the power to make this decision. There are so many people that didn't come tonight because they don't feel like you care about us and that there's other agendas here. So there's a lot of talk going around. I'm very new to this community. I've never witnessed anything this unconscionable before. And the people in this town seem to feel that this is something common. So I just ask you to please, thank you for letting me speak and go over my time. I just respectfully ask you to really take into consideration what you're doing with a yes vote to your...
You're not saying anything further, thank you very much.
My name is Jerry Metz. I live in Mount Shasta. So I am, of course, not as immediately impacted by this situation as some of my neighbors here in Weed. But I just wanted to interject a little tiny thing into the conversation. You may already know this, but if not, I wanted to put it into the conversation. I frequently travel south and stop at the Love's facility in Corning. And they have a loudspeaker system that broadcasts music out into the outside, over the parking lot and the pumps and all of that area. I don't know if they do it at night, because I've never been there at night, but certainly all day it goes. And every once in a while, there is an interruption in the music for an announcement. And the announcement goes like this. Customer 99, your shower is ready. Please proceed to shower number five. I just wanted to put that into the conversation, thank you.
Thank you for hearing us.
No problem. But I just wanted to let you know that if you filled out a card, there'll be a time to speak. So we're not going to entertain double conversations on a continuum here. So if you have filled out a card, I would suggest that you wait for the time, for that particular time. If you haven't, then you're welcome to speak.
I have not filled out a card. I apologize. I'm Jonathan Kabat, 1380 Wakefield, Weed, California. I think there's a lot of considerations that a community has to make. And I know there's, you know, environmental considerations. And some of those are, you know, audible concerns, and some of those are toxic concerns. And then I think there's quality of life concerns. And when we have a botanical garden trying to be developed and such, you know, we're trying to create a particular life and a standard of living in Weed, California. And some of that has to do with the economics of it. And what concerns me is a town that is becoming quite well-known for the truck stop and isn't drawing businesses into the center of the community. And the rest of the world seems to be divesting from fossil fuels. And there seems to be this incredible rise in awareness about how change is afoot and that we have a very short time period. Many scientists are saying 12 years in the United Nations is positing 12 years to change the entire economic model of the globe. For us to be doing something so retro as to be investing our land in our community in fossil fuels seems a little bit behind the times, and I think we can do better. I think Weed has an opportunity to be a town where we're developing new economic models. And some of those are controversial. I heard a gentleman today being challenged on his economic development model here. They're controversial, yes, but fossil fuels are controversial. And the controversy shifting away from fossil fuels, we're not going to need truck stops soon. Maybe we need to get Tesla to put in some big, you know, battery chargers in Weed. Something along the lines that's future-forward in helping us economically for our children's, children's, children. Thank you.
Any more comments? If not, we'll move on. On to number four. I want to specifically ask anybody on this council if they have a conflict of interest with any of these proposals before us. Financial gains? All right, and we're moving on to number five. Public hearing pursuant to the laws, we will open this public hearing. Let me see my little list here. This is a public hearing regarding three or four items, all of which escaped me right now. I've got so many pages, I just love this paperwork. We want to consider three appeals. An appeal from Love's amending conditions of approval. We're going to listen to an appeal from the residents of South Weed area. And we're going to listen to the appeal from Tepstra Henderson on behalf of Pilot Travel Centers. I think, for the sake of expediency, I am going to separate these appeal items into two sections. The first will be the appeal from Love's. And the second will be the appeal from residents of the South Weed area and the appeal from Tepstra Henderson on behalf of Pilot. I think that will make this thing flow a little bit easier. But I believe we can get a staff report regarding all of it. So we'll start with a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Palofini. Actually, from our perspective, this is a kind of a new hearing. So I'm just going to give you the staff report just as I did on the other two hearings.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, lean into it, all right.
We have to turn it on.
Okay, it's on. Thank you, though. Yes, this is a conditional use permit for Love's Travel Stop. The location is located immediately west of the Interstate 5 interchange at the Vista off-ramp for, the street is Vista Avenue for a tilt intersection, then it's Mountain View Drive. The site is Zon C2 in the City of Weed zoning code. C2 is a service commercial zoning. Service commercial is for businesses pretty much just like this, although in the C2 zone, all uses that are allowed in the C1 zone are also allowed in C2. So essentially, this is a full commercial with the broad spectrum of commercial property where this sits, immediately abutting the interstate. The general plan, the site is designated commercial in the City of Weed general plan. And I want to take this opportunity, I've received a comment about something I didn't mention before, about the general plan consistency concerning community design. Specifically, a comment about how parking is supposed to be behind the buildings in these commercial corridors. Well, first of all, this is not really a commercial corridor. This is what staff thought in the very beginning when we were looking at this general plan policy with the consultants. It's a freeway interchange, really. And also, it's, it's in, it's in a area that is, if you look back, if you step back from the general plan, first of all, general plan is a general plan. And there is no actual defined commercial corridors in the general plan. They're implied in certain areas like North-South, North and South Weed Boulevard, College Avenue, some of the new areas where we're planning on enhancing the mixed use or the retail-style commercial. This is actually service commercial. It's been zoned this since 1996. The Newtons did an annexation that also included an environmental impact report, which established these, this zoning. And those days, the general plan was amended as well. The zoning was not found to be incompatible at all with the surrounding uses. In fact, they have a pretty large buffer of open space, but that's just the zoning. Let's go back. All through the narrative of the general plan, we talk about how highway-serving commercial land uses are proposed in South Weed to capture revenue. And vibrant mixed-use corridors along Main Street and College Avenue can attract visitors, create retail jobs. There is a map 5.3 in the general plan. Also, service commercial is, as it's discussed in the general plan, generally require larger amounts of land for the purpose of light production and consumer services. And they even say, "such as big-box developments." Service commercial development is concentrated in South Weed by design. The last general plan from, I believe, 1990, had similar policy. This is, this direction and this policy is nothing new to the city of Weed, to promote freeway-oriented serving land uses there. Further, some of the land uses designated in the preserve, as stated in that general plan, are compatible with existing land uses. South Weed emphasizes as the city's service commercial center by allocating land to commercial industrial and industrial uses that can create jobs and generate revenue. Weed's existing condition as a highway-serving commercial center is by concentrating additional tourist-serving uses along Vista Drive exit and I-5. So when the policy in the general plan is a little bit vague, it's kind of meant, it's really a general plan. There is a shall on that, but it doesn't, we don't define where the corridors are. Now, this land use is such that we have a small amount of, relatively a small amount of buildings. If you deconstruct it, we have fast food, which is completely common in this South Weed key-growth area. We have a retail store that is also with every, just about every product, you know, that you could expect for the traveler, and also other services. And we have gas pumps, which are also right next door at contiguous properties in the same zoning, in the same key-growth area, under the same general plan policy and municipal code. So, and it's been that way since 1996. We just haven't had any proposals, except for the site history that has had... that has had approval for a, it was an Arco mini-mart type of situation. It was right on the front parcel. You know, right facing, not even so tucked up next to the freeway that it wasn't even at Mountain View Drive yet. So that use runs with the land. I know it's irrelevant here only to the aspect of the fact that this is a way bigger project. That use there on that 1.3 acre runs with the land. So really, we're not really disputing what kind of land, what kind of uses go on the property. This project is allowed use with a use permit. Many of the C1 uses would be a use by right. So I'm kind of going on about the zoning and it's kind of leading into some of my main arguments about, or my main points about the actual compatibility, but we'll visit that later. But essentially, this part of the C2 zone on this side of the freeway, this is the very far end corner, I would say this is the most southeast corner of this particular zone. So there's 17.6 acres, but the rest of the zoning, the C2 zoning on that side of the freeway is about 55 acres. So there's approximately 38 acres remaining that could be and probably will be developed consistent with the C2 zoning. So essentially, that's the probable development that might happen there. Again, we have 38 acres left. The location of the site is approximately, I want to say, at least a quarter mile towards, there's a, the way the zoning is set over there. And if you want to see, there's figure 1.1 in my staff report where it shows the C2 zoning. Then we have an open-space zoning, and then we have rural residential zoning. So we're about a quarter mile from the open-space area. So as far as buffering goes, there's going to be other land uses consistent with and kind of similar to this type of land use. We can expect retail shops. We can expect restaurants and related. It still is South Weed, and that is where we emphasize freeway-oriented tourist-serving business. So basically, the project description does include, like I said, retail, restaurants, tire and maintenance mechanic shop, and parking, and fueling islands. With that go a lot of things like underground storage tanks, above-ground storage tanks. I think we're going to get into the actual project, detailed project description when we go over the sequo portion of this. The project also includes landscaping, hardscaping pavement, 17 light, lighting, has signs. The sign history is that we've moved all the signs on the site and lowered the main sign. So anyway, I'm going to get on to site suitability. The site is accessed by two different access points. One is designed for automobiles and one is designed for trucks. It's like a safety feature right off the bat, the, I'm sorry, right upon getting off, or going on, either getting off the southbound or going under the underpass, right as you exit the right-of-way, the trucks and the cars are separated. In theory, I mean, that doesn't stop a car from going into the truck area, but a truck definitely would not be going into the automobile area.
Could I stop you for one second?
Sure.
Going back to the land use, is it typical in most interchanges that you have growth, commercial growth on both sides of an interchange?
I would think so. I mean, we have it up and down the state this way. Not necessarily, well, we have it, we have growth on each side of the other interchange. We have South Weed Boulevard, North Weed Boulevard.
But typical of developments up and down I-5?
Yes, yes. This is, that's one thing we've got to remember. It's a major transportation corridor. This, it would be serving that, and that's exactly what the intent of growth of a lot of the key-growth area is. As a matter of fact, we go as far in the general plan to encourage this type of growth in South Weed in the economic development element. So, and a little bit of the site history, like I said, it was, this is no surprise to many of the people that have been around since, let's say, 1996 because this land was annexed to the city with this zoning. So it's not like all of a sudden the city's rezoned this area and is planning on putting this. It's been in the work, this zoning's been here since 1996.
In the past and in the current general plan, there's land beyond Love's and across Sugar Pine and across Mountain View that is still zoned commercial, is that correct?
That is correct. It's, there's 38, this is in the far southeastern corner. So think about 38 more acres worth of commercial fanning out in directions, you know, to the east, I mean, to the west, to the north. I mean, yeah, to the north. So site access is, we've covered that, two good, very wide, very safe access points. Parking, since there's a mixed uses on site, there's definitely different requirements. If you look at table one in the staff report, this food service and retail would require about 40 spaces. And that's based on 86 seats, one space per five seats, one space per 200 square feet of usable floor area in the retail. So they require 40 spaces. They're providing 74, so fairly straight up, it's compliant. The mechanics building, same situation. They have parking based on 1.1 space per 500 square feet plus one per work bay. That would require 23 spaces. They have 97 spaces plus three additional auto stalls near the truck mechanics building. So that's really the operational buildings. It's the mechanics building and the retail and restaurant building. All these require additional parking for employees. I've kind of went way on the conservative side here as far as over-parking for employees. And I say it requires 16 spaces. Those get buried into the extra spaces in retail. So as far as the site parking goes, it's compliant with the City of Weed municipal code. Parking lot design is, there's the internal circulation. Once you get off the right-of-way onto the site, the truck operation is in the rear of the retail area. So it's really hard to say that, and then to think, kind of like having all the parking in the rear of buildings when we have this site that is really not many buildings and it's really a large site. In the general plan discussion narrative itself, it does say that commercial service is, takes up the most space of all, of the land space. So it would, while interpreting that one question, we inter, that if a general plan policy can't be such that it precludes a use. So what we have here is a lot of parking that I guess is supposed to go behind two relatively small buildings. Whereas the truck operation, where the pumps are and the mechanics building, they are behind the retail area. And there actually is very far from any public right-of-way view, noise, or any kind of impacts because it's pretty much back there, kind of like in a hole. If you can imagine the freeway slope coming down on one side, the forested slope coming down from the south, and then to the west, parking and also more hillside because of the shape of the property. It's not necessarily a square. So site drainage is handled in many ways. The 1996 EIR for the annexation required something like this. It was going to be a large basin out in the meadow. That was what was approved in the EIR then. And each, each commercial development coming in was, the policy was that they were supposed to build their own underground retention basins and then go into the major drainage basin that the city was to supply. Now, that's not, that hasn't been built yet, but the city is working on grants to do that because there is, again, more growth anticipated on that side of the freeway, 38 acres of commercial. So the applicants have actually designed a much far superior way to retain, for drainage retention. They are devoting quite a few areas, quite a few square feet of the site into bioretention swales. Bioretention swales are common now as a best management practice. It's basically, in a nutshell, I'm thinking the engineer, project engineer could explain this better, but, and I'm just a planner, so I'm just going to give it a shot here. It's a lot of engineered dirt, gravel, and other materials that are engineered to take out the pollutants from, you know, parking lot runoff and other runoff before. So they're treating the water before it exits the site. And then it will go be piped down into the area where the city already planned on putting runoff from this commercials area. We can elaborate on the bioretention later. I think it is a topic now where those are even now under question, whether they're appropriate or not, which really it's, it's the best management practice within the state, and I'd have to say the nation nowadays.
So can I interrupt real quick again?
Sure.
Let's go back to parking. Parking is, as far as this project is concerned, part of our request is to make sure that we get parking from a city standpoint to remove part of the parking congestion on the other side of the freeway. Is that correct?
Well, good point. I didn't mention that. I think I did in the staff report narrative. But I've been doing Weed, increasing my presence at the meetings since 2014 now. And it seems like every time we have a design review or some kind of question of development over on that side, let's say whether it's Starbucks, Grocery Outlet, any, people take that opportunity to remind us that there is a huge problem of truck parking along Blackweed Drive and other public right-of-ways over there, pretty much kind of at random and not necessarily on anybody's property, on public property. Well, that's what, that's the sign that you need a truck overflow area. And that's essentially what most of the parking, the truck parking is on this particular project, is truck overflow. So it would provide relief for that, and I think that's by design of the project. And one of the objectives of the project, if we look at that once again, but yes, that's part of it. They have 100 parking, I think it was 100. We'll just say about 97 parking spaces for trucks in various sizes. I don't really have to go through the size, but they're all, they're all large enough to accommodate big rigs. And I think that now we have a new proposal to make additions to the parking areas to cut down on some of the idling. I think we're going to have to hear from the project proponent about that because that's part of, one of the appeals, I believe. And just as a side note, if that appeal is granted and they do modify the conditions of approval, we'll just make that clear on the record and fix those mitigations, which are usually conditions of approval. So snow storage is also shown on the site. You'd expect to have a lot of snow on a 17-acre site. So they have quite a bit of snow storage, and they also will be, as conditioned, developing a snow storage master plan before they granted the building permit.
Is that also part of the drainage and the retention ponds and the bio swales?
Well, I'm not sure about that. I think that'd be a good question for the project engineer. Usually, we allow landscaped areas or any kind of impervious, I mean, permeable surface to be used as snow storage or even a parking space or two. They have it shown on the site plan. I wish I could see it from here, but towards the front, there's, yeah, there's plenty of snow storage indicated on that site plan. And plus, I think mostly they're going to be hauling that snow out, you know, with a snow management plan. Sometimes, you know, Weed doesn't get as much snow as some other cities like where I live. In McLeod, we get a ton of snow. Weed is a little bit more comfortable in that rain shadow. So snow storage has been taken care of.
Regarding the drainage, are we going to be, I don't know if inspected is the correct word, but is the North Coast water quality, is that the proper accurate?
Oh, you mean the regional quality control board?
Yeah, there you go.
That's who governs all the runoff and stormwater runoff, first from construction to the end. Construction stormwater permitting before construction. There's mitigations that address some dust, you know, and some of the activities. And yes, that stuff is under the jurisdiction of, well, I think even the Department of Water Resources might, but it's the regional boards for sure. So compatibility, it's, everybody's talking about how we're incompatible with the residential. Well, they didn't feel that way in 1996 when the EIR was adopted. And basically, it's because of all the buffering. We have 32, at the time, it was 55 acres of commercial being annexed into the city with that stripe of open space and then some low-density residential and then more open space. This was one of those kind of annexations that really had it all. It was designed well with open space in mind. And again, that C2 zoning was analyzed for compatibility then. So now we have our first project, and well, it's got to be compatible, but we're already talking about something that has zoning, that has probable development that is the same as it is on the other side of the interstate. So we can expect more of the same over here. This is the first project on the block. It also takes up the spaces that are extremely to the southwest corner, immediately adjacent to the freeway. It really is in a freeway interchange environment. The street that is in front of it is Vista Drive. But right where the road, right where the South Weed Boulevard comes in there, that road turns to Mountain View Road. So it's really not, that's another point we toiled with about whether this was considered a commercial corridor or not. We concluded that it's really a freeway interchange in a C2 zone that is where this service commercial, which requires space, more land than a retail or neighborhood commercial operation. We were going, well, which frontage are we really here most of? Vista Drive or are we on Mountain View? So it's not, we concluded that it was not a commercial corridor and also that the nature of this land use in general is that you need, it's an auto-oriented business with restaurants and retail. So that's the, the probable development is anything from C1, which is kind of a downtown, anything under, you know, that's commercial there, plus a lot of service commercial that do have use permits involved. So compatibility is based on what's across the freeway and the contiguous parcels there that the freeway is also a land use and the probable development you can expect from C2 in the future. I'm not going to get too much into the visual impacts. That's going to be addressed when we discuss the EIR. The draft EIR was modified with some new information addressing some of the concerns that were expressed on the first round of the Planning Commission. Just by going through a design review, which Just by going through a design review, which really is just based on one paragraph in the municipal code about the site, they're required to give us a site plan and elevations of the buildings. That's it for the, for section eighteen, point two-four, point oh-four-oh of the municipal code. That's what the law says. The design guidelines that we, we have, but I don't, they're suspect that we never even adopted them, but that's besides the point. They're, they're already intended for downtown, so we don't have all those, like, technical issues about how it's supposed to look with the Western theme and all that. What we have is that one paragraph that, that you review the site plan and the elevations. So, they did supply elevations there in the staff report. We also have these boards here that show the color scheme and also the, there's two operative buildings here. One has the setup for the retail, which of course is gonna be a little more colorful, colorful, but we have the same type of treatments that are, or even better, that are actually across in the contiguous parcels. We just opened up Grocery Outlet, and that has painted green, you know, at their, their base area. This would be some split face and stacked rock for texture, and then the textured kind of stucco looking, looking liking siding. So, as far as the compatibility with the other buildings in the area goes, this is a good fit. And the color scheme is subdued, kind of your typical kind of tan to forest kind of related colors. Of course, the traffic impacts were addressed in the SEQA document, and we'll probably be talking about that a little bit more. Light and glare, of course, a property this size with lights will have impact on the lighting. I, I typically, I'm used to just having downward-facing, full cutoff fixtures, no wall packs that go straight out. The, the final, it boils down to no direct glare should be leaving the property, as far as like, you see a bulb that's glaring. It's really should be, if anything, indirect light. That indirect light will have an impact, and that is described in the EIR as an unavoidable impact. So, so, the sign permits, they, again, we have flush-mounted signs on the primary buildings. We have flush, flush-mounted signs on the Speedco Building, and fuel canopies have signage. Our sign ordinance is pretty, pretty allowable as far as sign area goes. We have, essentially, the signs, the signs are compliant because there's one key thing in our code that says, "For each two thousand feet of the lot not covered by a building, an additional twenty square feet of perpendicular or freestanding sign shall be allowed so long as the sign is totally contained within the property." So, based on that, the applicants are allowed an additional seven thousand three hundred nine square feet of signage. So, basically, they have fourteen hundred and three square feet of freestanding sign, which proposed, and that is compliant for that, of course. It's way less than seventy-three hundred square feet. And the onsite signs is well within what is allowed for this large site. So, that's, we don't, also, we don't have a maximum height on signs. That's kind of part of a sign use permit, where, and there's a little bit of history here, where this, the applicants flew out and did take a look at the signage. The hundred-and-fifty-foot sign that was offsite was moved onsite and lowered to ninety feet. So, their sign package, as proposed, is compliant with the, with the municipal code.
Do we have an image of that anywhere?
We should. We definitely do. I'll let Gary jump in here.
Okay, that's okay. We, you do, so we can do, we can do that later.
Yeah, okay. So, part of the project also will require us to vacate a right-of-way. There, on this, on the site, there is a, a city right-of-way going up. It's like a cul-de-sac. It has its own AP number. It's not a legal parcel. It was dedicated to the city. So, we just, as a condition of approval, we have to go through that vacated, vacation of right-of-way as per the Streets and Highways Code. And also, we are relocating a community service easement. There's a water line that goes right down through the, through the project site, which will be moved as well. And these are all part of the conditions of approval. Relocating community service easements are also done through the Streets and Highways Code. So, and some, we have the draft EIR, the final EIR, that addressed, in staff's opinion, addresses all the concerns expressed at the scoping session for sure, and provided descriptions of impacts that are significant. It was a rather detailed document, and provided a formidable list of mitigation measures. And all mitigation are included as conditions of approval. Historically, commercial development has always been planned for the west side. The land uses in the site are consistent with other uses in C-two zone, and that are presently operating in the South Weed Growth Area. The EIR has examined alternatives to this project location and found that the location will reduce traffic condition on the east side of the Growth Area. The building specifications are all compliant with the City of Weed Municipal Code for height and setbacks. The parking requirements are met. The proposed signs are compliant with the municipal code. So, my recommendation has always been that if you could make the required findings below, the Weed proposed uses consistent with the goals, policies, and standards and maps of the Weed General Plan, and the other applicable plan adopted by the City of Weed, consistent with the Weed's zoning code, and design guidelines as applicable, and again, we just explained that they're really not. What I meant to say there is section eighteen, point two-four, point oh-four-oh of the municipal code. The established and maintenance operation will, under the circumstances, be not detrimental to the health, safety, and morals of the general welfare of the people in, in the general area. And again, that's, that's all because of distance. And the frequency of this is the fact that we really analyzed the C-two zoning in nineteen ninety-six. So, that's, that's there. That's been there. We're not worried about if zoning, if, if development consistent with that C-two zoning is compatible with surroundings. It's more about what we, we analyzed that in nineteen ninety-six. Of course, we look at the design, the site suitability, you know, how this project is put together, and that's what the staff report is about. Also, we wanna make a finding that there's adequate utilities, adequate roadway improvements, that the, the site is physically suitable for the type of development. And basically, that's the staff report, and I would like to introduce Gary Jacobs and Corey Risha from Ascent Environmental to answer any questions or present anything they have to present about the EIR and final EIR.
Great. Okay, with the end of the staff report, the official opening of the public hearing is now put in session, noting the time of about six-thirty.
Mr. Mayor, would you like a presentation of the EIR?
Yes, I would. I would like that right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Gary Jacobs with Ascent Environmental. I'm the principal in charge of our work on this project, and thank you for inviting us to Weed tonight. We're happy to be here, talk about the work that we did, and to answer your questions. Corey Risha is to my right. She's the project manager for this project, and she also can help answer any questions. I'm gonna talk about the EIR process. I'm going to try to be as, as brief as I can. I'll summarize the major findings of the EIR, just highlight some of the comments that we received, and then talk about next actions in, in front of you. This is just an illustration of the, what constitutes the final environmental impact report. It's the draft EIR, the final EIR that we produced in September, on September the seventh, thank you. And then, after the final EIR was, was released, one of the commenters on the final EIR expressed that some of his comments were not addressed. We found evidence that they probably had been submitted by email and maybe rejected. We don't really know, but we did then address those comments, too. So, we wanted to make sure that we thoroughly addressed everything. California Environmental Quality Act, it requires the consideration of the physical environmental effects of a project, not the social and economic effects, but the physical environmental impacts. The analysis has to be based on reasonable assumptions that are predicated on facts, on facts, and on expert opinion based on facts. The conclusions of an EIR are not based on, on opinion, argument, speculation, unsubstantiated opinion that in, that is, or evidence of social or economic effects that do not result in environmental changes. SEQA requires, applies to discretionary decisions, so this sort of decision that you have in front of you. It generally requires a preparation of environmental impact reports when it's a major project or a mitigated or, or non-mitigated negative declaration, if it's not as large of a project and the impacts are not as, as, as large. The process of SEQA, I'm just gonna walk through it so we can kind of get to where we are today, starts with a notice of preparation and a scoping meeting, and that was held in two thousand seventeen, about a year ago. On June fifteen, two thousand eighteen, the draft EIR was, was released to the public. The final EIR, the first draft of it, again, was released September seventh, and then the additional responses to comments on September twenty-seven. We've also responded to various comments that have been raised subsequent to that. SEQA only requires that we respond to those comments on environmental issues that were raised during the public comment period, but we've really engendered to respond to all comments that had been received up through the Planning Commission hearings. Our, our goal has been to try to inform you, as is our job, on the significant environmental impacts of the project. There have been three public hearings, Planning Commission hearing on August fifteenth, a, a new hearing was held by the Planning Commission on October third, and then here we are today for a hearing in front of you. Full disclosure on, on our part, our contract for this work has been paid for by the applicant, by Love's Travel Stops. That is common under SEQA, and it's allowable under the law that we are compensated by an applicant, so long as our work reflects the objective views of the city. City staff has thoroughly reviewed all of our work. They've, they've provided memorandum and comments for us to address along the way, but all of our work is objective. That's our job. So, just wanna make sure that you're, you're fully aware of, of the relationship there. Little bit of project background. It's, the project site's on seventeen-point-six acres. As Keith told you a few minutes ago, the site had been proposed as an ARCO station. The exhibit in front of you right now shows the zoning in the area, and it shows the commercial zoning. The project site is cross-hatched in on that exhibit. It's surrounded by commercial zoning, and then between commercial zoning and residential is open space. Generally, the project site, or the proposed project, has two separate fueling stations, a sixteen-position car fueling station and eight-position truck fueling station. It'll have a convenience store, two fast-food restaurants, and ancillary facilities also will be included. As, as Keith said, there'll be seventy-four, parking for seventy-four automobiles and ninety-seven trucks, overnight parking for trucks, and we'll have limited idling, no more than five minutes of idling will be allowed. We'll talk about that a little bit more later on in the presentation. Be thirty-five employees per day, spread over three shifts. And this is just an illustration of the site plan, which you have in your staff report. And this is the site plan over an aerial photograph, so you can see how it lays out on the land. Also, a landscape plan has been prepared. Some trees will be removed during construction, and the landscape plan essentially replaces those trees on the site in a landscaped pattern that surrounds most of the site, not the entire site. The entrance to the project site has to have line of sight, so there are some areas that won't have the same kind of tree planting that will be in other areas of the site. As far as distance to the nearest residence, the draft EIR indicated that six hundred and fifty feet was the distance between the project site and the nearest residence, and that was really lot-lined, lot-lined. Based on some comments we received, we took a more detailed look at the edge of where project development would be, so after where the bioretention facility is, 'cause there's no noise, nothing happens there, it's just a, an area that, that cleans runoff. So, the distance between where activity on the project site would be and the nearest residence is one thousand one hundred feet. I know you received a comment earlier tonight that somebody said that their residence was three hundred feet. We looked at the address. It's further than the nearest residence. So, we're just, wanna make sure for the record that that's clear. The EIR was comprehensive. It evaluated this entire list of issues, I believe sixteen issues that are addressed here, and this is the full range of issues that one would address in an environmental impact report. Significant impacts were found in the issues of aesthetics, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise and vibration, transportation and utilities, and mitigation was included in the environmental impact report to reduce all of these issues to the extent that it was feasible to do so. After mitigation was introduced, there would still be significant impacts to aesthetics related to light and glare. With regard to comments on the draft EIR, there were a lot of comments on aesthetics, disagreement with the EIR significance conclusions. And to that end, aesthetics is a, is a subjective issue. We did include visual simulations in the EIR. We've included more in the final EIR. The, you know, as you, when you look at a project site up close, it's always gonna look like you've got a significant change in the environment. We try to look at it in a broader perspective. Is it affecting scenic vistas? Is it, is it going to have a dramatic effect on the area? We concluded that, that the overall visual changes were not significant, because it doesn't block any, any vistas, and the area that the project site would be visible is, is traveled by residents in the area, but it's not a heavily-traveled roadway, and the, the views of scenic vistas wouldn't be blocked. But there would be a change. And so, we say there's a change. It's an adverse change. We just didn't say it was a substantial and adverse change. Subjective view. Air quality, several comments including overnight generator use and lack of, of significant impacts in the EIR. There were some biology comments and greenhouse gas emissions comments, and we addressed all of these issues in the final EIR. Also hazards, wildfire hazards, including from, from transients. Land use, comments about the appropriateness of the site in that Cal Poly students had developed a general plan. It's not the general plan that was adopted, though. And we look at the comparison of the project to the adopted land use plan. We looked at noise, and not only did we look at noise, but we actually went out and did additional noise measurements at a travel stop. At the time we prepared the EIR, we were looking for reference material. This is what we do. Where else do you have travel stops that we can take noise measurements? We ended up, during the response to comments period, taking noise measurements, and we found out that we overestimated the noise in the environmental impact report. We looked at, there were comments on transportation and utilities, and again, all of these were addressed. In terms of aesthetics, based on comments raised during the EIR, the high-rise sign that was proposed offsite at a hundred-and-fifty feet was moved to be onsite and ninety feet high. The high-rise sign area was reduced in, in size from seventeen hundred square feet to seven hundred and eighty-six square feet, and the total and the total signage on the site, on the, in the area was also reduced from 7, from 3,000 to 2,174 square feet. One of the comments suggested that all the lighting on the site be dark skies coalition rec, follow dark skies coalition recommendations. It was a good idea, and in our response to comments, we added that mitigation measure to the EIR. So that's now our requirement, that all lighting follows dark skies coalition recommendations. We updated some, we provided updated simulated views of the project site, and this first one here is the view of travelers traveling south on South Weed Boulevard just before the intersection with Vista Drive. This is the simulation of the view of a traveler on Mountain View Drive as they approach the site. And by the way, you're not going to see a visual simulation of every single possible view. We're just trying to give representations of what the project would look like, and SEQA does not, SEQA doesn't require that we do visual simulations at all, just that we evaluate the issue. We're just trying to use what tools we have to try to illustrate for you what the impacts might be. The applicant also prepared some simulations of, you know, with their, a separate consultant of the signage as it would be seen from the freeway. We peer-reviewed it. What they did was they flew a balloon, a blimp, at a certain height to make sure that they got the height correct. We looked at the raw information, and we said, yeah, this is credible information, so we are showing it here, and we showed it in the final EIR. So this is an updated simulated view on northbound I-5, about a tenth of a mile from the site and then passing the site. This is an updated simulated view. Again, it's showing the smaller signage. It's southbound I-5 from 0.2 miles from the site and then at the Vista Drive exit. So you can see the sign in that. The sign appears a little bit brighter than it would in real life. It's just really difficult to do simulations of things like this, but that's, that's at least gives you a sense of scale. Already talked about noise. Just one thing that when we were doing responses, we looked more precisely not only at the distance, but whether or not there was any intervening topography between the project site and the nearest residences, and there is. Pretty much all the residences would be blocked by a hill from the trucks up, at least up at the mountain ranch area. So there's a hillside that intervenes. As to the appeals, Keith did talk about them briefly. I'll just talk about the one from the applicant. It's a bit unusual. The applicant actually asked that, we added some, a lot of, a lot of options of how to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and also air quality emissions, and the applicant's requested that rather than have these as options, he wanted to, they wanted to express some mandatory provisions. So they are placing signs that limit idling to five minutes on the site. That's just not typical, but, you know, certainly, it's a requirement, but having the signage on the site's not typical. Also installing additional onsite electrical charging stations. So those are, those are some of the changes proposed by the applicant. As far as SEQA considerations, we have a lot of comments that the EIR should have been recirculated. The requirements for recirculation is if, based on comments received, there are new, there are new significant impacts that can't be reduced to a less-than-significant level if they are raised in comments. That's pretty much the threshold that is used to determine if we need to recirculate the document. There weren't any comments that resulted in new significant effects. Some of the effects were reduced from what were in the EIR, including moving the sign and reducing the height and then adding the dark skies lighting. There are a lot of comments that disagreed with our conclusions. As it states in SEQA, disagreement among experts does not make an EIR inadequate, and so that's just something for you to, to consider. As far as any next actions, I don't know if you want to receive the applicant's presentation next or public input, but we're certainly here to answer any questions that you might have on the work that we've done, and we're here for the balance of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually, I think we'll hear from the project proponent if you have something to say. Name and address, please.
Kim Van Dyke, reside at 3153 East 1250 North Leighton, Utah.
And I take it you're representing Love's, right?
I have for 21 years.
Okay, thank you.
So I will, again, tonight, and before I start, if I may, ask that I'm allowed to reserve speaking again after the public comments are done, before I could answer those questions that come up.
It's on my schedule.
Great. Then I'll make this part short because the other might get a little bit lengthy. As I said, I'm Kim Van Dyke, and I've been with Love's Travel Stops for 21 years and in the industry for about a little less than 28 years. So I think I have a little feel for the industry, and I would like to give just a quick overview. Most of the people in here have heard this already three times, but I'd like to just start by saying that the Love's Travel Stop Company is the second-largest in the number of travel stops nationwide, but it's still family-owned. It started in 1964 with one gas station in Oklahoma by Tom and Judy Love, and has grown to over 480 travel stops and still about 60 C-stores out there. Great company to work for. I wouldn't still be with them. I used to work for a competitor and left because I didn't like the way they treated people and did business. There were five of us that left, all on the same day in 1997, and came to Love's, and all of us are still with Love's. So I'm saying that because I work for a great company, a great family, and I know this is a difficult subject. I know it. I've got it. I do this time and time again. I get that, but one thing I can assure you is the Love's care. They, they care about people and their communities, and if someone doesn't believe me, all you have to do is get online and see the amount of money that they put out for national disasters, local people, including Children's Miracle Network that just finished. The last time I spoke, I think they were at like $2 million that they raised this year. I think it ended up at about 2.5 million. If I do my math right, 480 stores, each store average is about $4,800 that goes to the local hospital. Check's written. So that's just one of many, many things that they do. What I can tell you is that there's quite a few in here that we have discussed the last meeting before last with the Planning Commission, and I heard the biggest area at that time was, the sign was too big. It's bigger than our mountain. It's 150 feet tall and 1,700 square feet. I looked at and told the Planning Commission chairperson that I hear the people and that I would do everything I could to get Greg Love out to the site to relook at the sign, the high-rise sign that it was in the wrong place and too big. And he's changed his schedule around after I called. I think we got out at about 10:30 Wednesday night, called him that first thing in the morning. He changed his schedule around, picked me up in Carson City, Nevada at 9:30, and we were here by 11 o'clock the next Monday. And he did change from 150 foot, 1,700 square feet, down to 90 feet in height, which is, I think, less than anyone else on the east side, and only, I think, 784 square feet. So we almost shrunk it down half in size and half in height and put it on our property. Now, there seems to be some comments that that was the wrong place to put it, that now the glare's even worse. I'm not sure I understand that, but maybe we could go back to the other site. I'm not real sure. But I gave my word that I would do something, and I think there's very few companies as large as us or smaller that would have done that that quickly. We also looked at some of the other entities that someone else has brought up, that the movement for electricity in California, more so than any other state in the Union. And we went ahead and changed, which you already are aware of, one of our mediations to suggest that we would look at putting in EV charging, to saying that we will. So again, we get it. I think that, that EV and electric being here like tomorrow and probably put us out of business, I hope it does. I hope it does, because we're going to be ready for it, because we have all the infrastructure to start plumbing up electricity and we could take on all the electric cars. But we haven't seen that yet. And the reason I know that is this is just some of the numbers I'm going to give you real quick, and then I'll address more a little bit later, if I may. Kind of where we're at as a company of, through 2017, we moved and hauled 85.7 million gallons of diesel fuel across the nation, including gas. Just, just Love's. What I'm saying is that's a lot of petroleum being moved, but without that movement of those truckers doing that, 99% of us would not be able to get in our cars and have the fuel to go to work, take care of our kids, send them to school, go to the hospital, go on vacations, et cetera, et cetera. Someday, all-electric. I hope it happens. Hope it happens in my lifetime, but I don't think it will. But we're getting prepared for it, and we're willing to be ahead of the game to do these kind of things. We also have now hotels in some of our locations that help house people that are on the road going on vacation. We employ over 22,000 people, and I think that's a big deal because all communities, not everyone needs a job, but so many still do. And having 35 to 50 people, which I estimate will have conservatively, I think that's a big deal for a community. I think they need it, and I think a lot of people will be very happy. And besides that, it's a good enough company, great enough company, that a lot of these people will have the opportunity to not only work for Love's, but the benefit package, the compensation, and the growth that we do and the company that we are. So many stay and grow with us. If they want to, the opportunities are unlimited. I started in this business cleaning showers, by the way. I could go on for hours about the Love's and the things that they do, but I could assure you that we're looking at all these little issues. We've agreed to the mitigation measures. We've added some in there ourselves. We're going to have a beautiful facility that everyone's going to be proud of. That I could assure you. And not only that, is we are doing these little things along the way, all the way from the, maybe not too minor, the dog poop area, but it was asked for, we put it in there, all the way to changing our lighting and reducing our lighting, and it's not even in here. I've already checked with corporate office. We're going to be doing approximately 10% at a minimum less lighting than we have in a typical Love's. I think you're going to see in the end, just as we get in this, that not everything, not all my words, not anyone's words really are exactly right, but I looked at some of the stuff that's been presented, of showing us with like no trees, and I just happened to Google Earth and walked out there and counted as many as I could. On the Caltrans side of the interstate I-5, I just want to bring this up real quick. There are 78 trees that I can't touch. So we may be taking away 174 and planting 174, but there's 78 that I can't touch that obstructs the view from I-5, that they won't be able to see the travel stop. There's no way. If you look at the photos that are in one of the documents that was presented or will be presented, if you look from the travel stop through the trees, you can't see the interstate and you can't see a car or truck. So the vice versa happens. They can't see the travel stop. Also, from the homes that are surrounding, I've driven out there for hours and hours for days and months. Last meeting, I said the same thing as I would reiterate here, questions of this visibility factor. We're still going to be who we are. But I went to all the homes on that whole circle and in the mountains and took photos and asked that if anyone disagreed with my photos and my comments, I tried to get as close to their front porch as I could, and I took photos. No way can anyone ever see that facility when it's built. It's too many trees. No way. No one took me up on the offer, but I did the pictures and I went and looked, because I cared enough to go look. And there's no way they could see through all the trees that block between the future Love's, hopefully, and their homes. So again, I'll reserve time, hopefully, to answer and respond to anything that you have either now or at the end, but I thank you for your time and thank you for coming out.
You stated, just so that we know, you stated 174 trees. What it says in here is 145. Is it?
Yeah. I'm off on my numbers. Like I said, I don't always speak the exact numbers. At least I did it over than under.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else from anyone yet, and then I'll hopefully be back?
Sandy, you have the cards, right? Okay, now we'll hear testimony by interested parties, and Sandy, I guess, will direct that.
So if they've already spoke and given you a card, are they speaking again? Or is there?
I, they, I don't think they're going to. We'll see.
Is there a time limit?
Oh, let me, let me rephrase some of the rules, I guess, for my counsel. We're going to allow three minutes to speak. Please speak clearly into the microphone. If you have any exhibits, make sure you get them to us. We reserved the right to regulate speakers who may attempt to speak over or be redundant or just be, oh, just keep going and going and going. So we want to make everything here, we want you to speak clearly and to the point is the big thing. So with that, we'll get started. And no attacks on character, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Mike Newton, and I'm a property owner and I'm in contract to sell property to Love's Truck Stop. I am in favor of Love's Truck Stop, and I'd like to give you a little historical background. My brother and I purchased property known as the Kellogg Ranch at the south and west part of Weed. It was outside of the city limits at the time. We purchased it in 1977. In 1996, we decided to file an application to bring the property into the city of Weed, which we did, and as part of that process, we had to pre-zone the property, which we studied with experts, and that's where the zoning came in for highway commercial, residential, open spaces. At that time, we donated free of charge to the city. open spaces. At that time, we donated, free of charge, to the city of Weed, fifty-eight point seven acres of wetlands of that property, which the city now retains and, I think, is going to build some type of arbitrary or wetlands project. I'd also like to note that in nineteen ninety-six, we provided a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, my brother and I, to the city of Weed to help with the infrastructure at the south part of the city. We also provided an easement to a water tank that was constructed, free of charge to the city. We provided that easement. I've listened to all of the arguments against this project, and I can only say that Interstate I is here to stay, and the internal combustion engine is here to stay for our lifetimes and probably far beyond that. And someday, we may have electric-powered vehicles, but it's going to be a long time coming. I think that this project is good for Weed. I think it'll provide a lot of jobs and tax revenue. And if I thought it was as bad as these people seem to think it is, I still own four hundred or three hundred and fifty acres adjacent to this, and I wouldn't be cutting my throat by encouraging this type of project. I also would like to last tell you that my brother and I created fifty-two lots, a subdivision, with city water and sewer and paved roads, underground utilities, a first-rate project. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, council members. My name's Katie LuCasey. I represent Terpshire Henderson. We've been working with Pilot and have filed an appeal in this action. Now, first, I'd like to preliminary say that the city should continue this hearing, because there has not been a planning commission report presented, as is required by your municipal code, section one eight point three two, one two B. Now, getting into the merits of our appeal, from the beginning, Pilot's concerns have been less to do with where Loves locates its facility and everything to do with how the process is done in this project. Specifically, Pilot's concern is that the overall roadway network, the intersections, interchanges, will be overwhelmed by the project of this magnitude. If that happens, it isn't just Loves who suffers by these damages. It's the unmitigated traffic impacts that will affect Pilot and other neighbors in the area. For that reason, Pilot has insisted upon a comprehensive, robust traffic analysis to be included in the EIR. Unfortunately, despite several technical memos and comments we've submitted on the draft EIR, the council's being asked to make a decision based on an incomplete document and an inadequate secret process. We've submitted a traffic expert peer review of the EIR analysis. Our expert concluded that the EIR traffic study failed to utilize the appropriate trip generation methodology and led to substantial underestimation of the traffic from the project. The EIR also failed to properly differentiate between passenger cars and truck traffic. Essentially, that failed to recognize that how you handle a project of this magnitude is much different than a standard gas station in a mini-market. The result is the impacts are minimized, the inadequate mitigation measures are proposed, and the overall traffic circulation network is compromised. That's bad for business and bad for the city. Now, our second main point is that Pilot is aware from previous planning commission meeting that the community may want the project to move on the east side of I-5 in the vacant land within the same master planned area. Again, Pilot's concerns are mainly with the overall integrity of the system, so the location is not the biggest problem here. Thank you for the consideration of our views.
Thank you.
Eric Ziller.
Eric Ziller, four-three-one Beacon Hill Road in Weed. And I'm going to read this as quick as I can. It should be less than three minutes. "Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I brought a DVD to the city clerk's office that I hope all of you have had a chance to view. It shows that GPS devices will direct both north and southbound Highway ninety-seven traffic to use South Weed Boulevard to access and leave the west side Loves location, bringing them past the Berean Church through the neighborhood of homes and apartments. Putting up 'no trucks allowed' signs will be no more effective than posting five-minute idling signs unless there is constant enforcement. And the hundreds of cars, cars pulling trailers and RVs, will still be using that road every day at all hours, endangering the families, kids, pets, and students who live there. Indeed, section five point three point seven of the general plan confirms South Weed Boulevard as a designated truck route. This project should not move forward until this issue is adequately addressed. Another issue that I believe has not been adequately addressed is the sewage issue. The city of Weed has three thousand residents, but on busy days, Love could have as many as five thousand visitors. Most are travelers who will take the opportunity to use the bathroom. The first stretch of sewage line along South Weed Boulevard has never been used and will suddenly be subject to massive use. It will then join the sewer lines of the homes on the west side of Weed and will triple the impact on the Shastina sewage field. I believe more study and testing needs to be done before this project is safe. Have any of you taken the time to walk around the east side, especially at night? Bringing vagrants, homeless, and panhandlers to the residential west side shows a callous disregard for the safety of those resident families. Those individuals will soon discover that on bad panhandling days there are convenient nearby homes without police protection, just waiting to be vandalized and robbed. My main complaint is that the east side Alternative Three site has never been considered. Can any one of you tell me why that location would not satisfy the city's stated objectives of creating local jobs and city tax revenue?" And let's be honest about the tax revenue. As Kim Van Dyke has stated, another truck stop will not magically create more traffic on I-5. As always, that will be dictated by economic conditions, the price of fuel, and the weather. The number of customers in South Weed will not be substantially increased. The taxes that Love pays will come out of the pockets of the east side businesses who have lost customers to the west side, decreasing the taxes that those businesses paid. What's worse is that West Side Loves will eliminate the potential for secondary sales at grocery outlets, Starbucks, the gift shop, the fast food restaurants, and the two mini-mark gas stations, all of which are locally owned. The city owes it to their citizens to step back and take a broader and more realistic analysis of both the short-term and long-term impact that this West Side project will have on the safety and future of our town. Thank you."
Thank you.
Is it Dave Bruce?
Dave Bruce, twenty-five seventeen College Avenue. Thanks for listening. I don't really know what to say except for it's a big project. It's a really big project. It's a really, really big project. Ninety-seven trucks. I can't help but call it heavy industrial. And it's in the EIR. They use kind of commercial, but there was one table and they used the word heavy industrial. I think, you know, Loves is, I think it's great. I mean, what they've got, if I look at Loves, what they're, what they want and what they're doing and where they want to put it, and I just look at, right, the hill and the interchange, it all makes sense, if it's just that. If you don't look at Weed. Weed is a jewel. Weed is a jewel. And the comments, there's a public forum in the Weed Press, and it's a public forum. And I've seen like, I didn't, just my best guess is like maybe thirty letters in to the Weed Press in that public forum about the Loves Truck Stop. My best guess is thirty to one. So in terms of a representative government, you know, it's, this isn't science or anything. It's just kind of, but it's, you know, when you say to yourself, okay, thirty to one, or something like that, ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the letters, are putting forth a vision that says Loves doesn't fit the Weed, our vision of Weed. It certainly doesn't fit mine at all. It's just too big. I wrote in a letter to you. I said it's like taking this pastoral scene and jumping up in one huge step. And, you know, we teach our kids to take baby steps. I mean, that's when we do our best work. You've heard a number of comments here that have to do with kind of, I can't remember the specific comments, but, what am I trying to say here? Kind of, can't remember the exact... So let me just kind of... So, I mean, you've got comments like the, whatever you, whatever your vision is for that pasture land. I mean, we think of pasture, we think of pastoral. When we think of truck stops, we think, I mean, personally, I think the east side's already too much, and I think what the Pilot was saying about, you know, all the road congestion. So when you think of a big truck stop, you think somewhere like out in the middle and nowhere. That's kind of like, it's obvious. I mean, it's right now, the east side is pretty obvious industrial. The west side, everyone, your people are saying, hey, this is pastoral. The vision that's possible. I mean, people, you got two truck stops. My wife works at Amala. My wife works at Mount Shasta. They have a visitor center. They have forty, fifty, up to a hundred people a day coming to that visitor center. They got a lot going on there, and they nurture. If you're going to have, on one side, everyone accepts it. It's, you need big commercial. On the other side, a lot of people saying, pastoral, let's make this softer, friendlier, something that really is inviting people in. I think a lot of people are expressing, a lot of Weed people are expressing a vision. One fella earlier talked about...
We need to wrap it up.
Taking the high road, take the high road.
Thank you, Dave.
Flo Anderson.
Good evening. I think we've spent a lot of time on the EIR, and we've spent, what? Oh, I'm sorry. Flo Anderson, sixty-one thirty-five Dogwood in Hammond Ranch. We've spent a lot of time on the EIR, but there's been very little attention paid to kind of the overall look of this, this project, and also of the social implications. It's like, what are you doing to the neighborhoods by dumping something that's clearly, as this gentleman just said, heavy industrial? It's not just commercial. It's not the small gas station that was originally had the conditional use permit for this area. It's a major deal, and all those trucks are a major deal. And with regard to aesthetics, I think there's going to be an impact of light, even, but I'm particularly pleased that you adopted some of the dark sky recommendations. That's a good thing. But I've already lost my view of the sky, and I don't live right next to the highway, but there's enough light coming off of South Weed right now, so I don't see anything and no stars in that part of the sky. And I can see all the stars if I look in the other direction. And that has occurred in the last maybe ten years or so. As far as the music and the announcements, that's something that's never been mentioned before. I don't know if this is standard Loves policy or not, but that could be extremely disturbing to all of us who live in what we like as a quiet place. And sound in a quiet place travels a long way. And I don't want to be hearing those from my house. And I don't know, I don't think that's been addressed in the EIR at all. And I, maybe Loves can address that issue when they respond. And I just think that this whole project is not compatible with the neighborhood, and that if you put it anywhere, it should be on the east side. And if you think that people are going to come see open space that's next to the truck stop with all those trucks in it, I don't think so. It's, you know, as open space, whatever's left is not going to be useful. One of my concerns has to do with the water table and possible contamination. It's like, who's going to be monitoring this? We all depend on groundwater for our drinking water, and nobody's mapped the groundwater here. So we don't, we have no idea what the structure looks like, despite the fact that they'd be instituting the most, best methods available for keeping things clean and keeping things out of the water. We really don't know what's going on. Is that, is that me?
It's you, hon.
Let me say one more sentence. Won't they require a timber harvest plan if they're taking out that many trees?
Hello, Bob Shipley, fifteen oh nine Ranch Road. And before I get started, can I ask one question, Mayor Palfini? That you had said that you were going to organize this meeting to deal with Loves' appeal first, and then the other two appeals. Am I right in assuming that they've kind of squished together?
Yeah, we have, because once this whole process started, it seems like, I believe we can just deal with them all, as long as everybody speaks to what they want to speak to.
Okay.
We can address them all at the end. I thought maybe we would go off on too many tangents, and we have.
And we will.
So we might as well just keep going.
May I request, then, again, again, before I start, since Loves had way more than three minutes to address their appeal, if I could have eight or ten minutes, I'm one of the appellant's in the, in the appeal by the local homeowners, and I need more than three minutes to present that appeal.
How many minutes, you thinking?
Eight.
Counselor?
But I have a response to that, and someone else might need to have every time. We want to be fair to everyone who's speaking.
I can't, and Loves had way more than three minutes.
Well, we don't allot...
And didn't even address the appeal.
Hold on. Call the order, please. We don't just allot time. I can allow time, but you can't just give time up. This is not the U.S. Congress. So I will allow you, just try and wrap it up in about five, can we sit the clock for about six minutes?
I will try.
You speak faster, and we'll listen better.
Unless I lose track. I will try, and thank you. First of all, I would ask everyone up there that if you haven't been able to digest all of the material in front of you, because there's a lot of it, guaranteed, you know, we as laymen have a hard time digesting it, take a day, take a week, take two weeks before you make your decision, if you need to. If you feel like you have it digested, you can make it tonight.
I read every page. I'm okay.
And basically, the EIR doesn't comply with SEQA. It is inadequate. And as the representative of assent has said, that disagreements among the experts doesn't make the EIR inadequate, but neither do statements by assent that their assessment is adequate. That doesn't make it adequate as well. The disagreements with the EIR could be absolutely valid. The reason why the EIR isn't adequate, and, you know, in the appeal and in my letter that I submitted last week, it spells it out, so I'll try not to repeat myself too much. Aesthetics, while, yes, aesthetics can be subjective, ugliness can also be objective. And if you look at the truck stop, it is not attractive. That is not a subjective, that is an objective assessment. So, and the EIR did not address anywhere near adequately the fact that this will take a very pretty part of Weed, the entrance to... a very pretty part of weed, the entrance to weed, the way that people make their assessment of what weed is and what weed would be like, it is going to be made much, much less attractive. And it will turn weed into a truck stop town, rather than a, an outdoor recreation or a beautiful rural town. The noise element is totally inaccurate, and I would refer you to Dale Leforis' assessment and, and letter with regard to the noise. The transportation element, the representative from Terpstra Henderson, who filed another appeal, they had the Mott McDonald firm do a peer assessment of the transportation issues, saying how inadequate those parts of the EIR are. And, you know, if you, if you Google Bing Maps or Google Earth Maps, they will direct you through South Weed Boulevard to get from ninety-seven to get to the site of Love's. Nowhere is that addressed in the EIR, what that will do to the traffic in that area. Lighting, even the people from assent have said, well, the lighting can't really be fully or even partially mitigated. The fire, the risk of fire in the area, this is an area, and I'm two-thirds of the way done, in case the time is running out, this is an area of high, high fire hazard severity. And there were no experts on fire that were, that put into the, the EIR. And there were multiple comments from the public about the possibility of fire danger, both in terms of hazardous spills, in terms of people throwing their cigarettes, in terms, in terms of transients. So that's another area that the EIR was inadequate. The air quality, nobody has dealt with the fact that trucks aren't gonna idle for three, for five minutes. You can put a sign up there, they don't. A study was done in two thousand and eleven along I-5, where the average time for a truck to idle is like thirty, forty minutes, rather than the minimum of three minutes, which the study said, or the maximum of six hours. The average was something in the area of thirty minutes of truck idling time. And that wasn't dealt with in terms of noise in the EIR, or in terms of air quality. And finally, the EIR basically totally ignores the idea that there is an alternate site on the east side of I-5 with the infrastructure in, that wouldn't have the, the negative consequences. So basically, in my opinion, and in a lot of people's opinion, the EIR did not address nearly one hundred pages of comments, ninety-eight percent of which were against the, the project. And basically, as I see it also, the project violates the Weed Municipal Code and the Weed General Plan. Mr. McKinley has said how this, this project is compatible with the neighborhood. The, no, it just basically isn't. There is a residential area right behind there, it's not compatible at all. It's a large residential area. Nowhere along the I-5 corridor, nowhere in California does Love's have a project that's anywhere near as close to a residential area, or to that scale of residential area than this proposal has. So basically, you know, you're not only selling out the community by pulling in this, by putting in this project, but you're selling out all the homeowners in that area. The, a conditional use permit was granted for a one acre, one point one acre ARCO station. That is a lot different than a seventeen and a half acre industrial pollution, mixed up terms there, industrial development. Basically, that's it. I don't see much economic benefit as well, because there's a finite number of people driving down I-5. Whoever goes to the Love's station will be taking business away from Pilot. It will be taking business away from the other gas stations that are in the area. Whoever eats at the fast food restaurants will be taking business away from the other fast food restaurants. So the amount of business will be the same. Whatever money comes in from, into Love's will, will be taken away from the other places. So I think it's a bad idea, and I also think that the EIR doesn't even come close to adequately assessing the situation. Thank you for the extra time.
Karen Rogers.
Karen Rogers, seventeen forty-five Maple Drive, Hammond Ranch, Weed. I've been a Weed resident for nearly thirty-five years, in Siskiyou County, a little longer than that. I've invested my life here because of how beautiful this whole area is, and particularly Weed. I agree with many of the people here, so I won't repeat a lot of things, other than what I feel is the most relevant, but we are Weed. I have worked in the school districts, I've worked for the county, I've, I've worked with the city of Weed on recycling projects, so please don't draw these lines so rigidly of who's Weed and who's not Weed. We are your community. And I have come to stand up for clean air and clean water in Weed for city residents when county projects were threatening to lower lifestyles. So we care about each other. And I think what I'm asking more than anything, I agree with others that there's too many inadequacies in the EIR. And I want to just bring up quickly, I'm here tonight with a six-year-old child at home, probably not being taken care of the right way, he's a special needs kid, and my study in this now shows me that toxins in our environment are now bringing autism to one in twenty-four boys in our nation. We have to start looking at where we want to go in terms of taking care of the health of our community and our nation. I don't, I think a truck stop is about the worst thing I can personally imagine seeing come after my thirty-five years here, and especially Hammond Ranchers. We plow our own roads, we brought in our own power, we're responsible for ourselves. Now, when I drive my child to school, we will come across ninety idling trucks, smells, the sounds. It's not the Weed I want to be a part of. I know people already listing their homes, because it's not the life they wanted. So I'm asking you to consider the golden rule. If you wouldn't want me to vote, to put it, and there are closer residents, and I think we need to take issue with, I think this would be the closest in California, as well as in the, in the worst fire danger area. I don't think it's the right place, and I think Love's will be fine, and Kim Van Dyke will be fine, and move on to the next project. And just because we have an exit doesn't mean we have to put a truck stop there. There are eight hundred exits or so along I-5, and there are only four Loves in all of California, so other communities have said no, because they cared and respected about the whole of the community. So I'm asking you to have a vision of what it could be there, something we could all be proud of together. I will help, we will help, let's design something that could attract even more money, maybe than Love's. And Love's, there's gonna be costs that are left, and I don't think Kim Van Dyke's gonna get on a plane and come back when there's a problem. Those will be Weed problems, and they will be costly. So, thank you very much.
Ushie Hill.
Hi, Ushie Hill, eight zero two four Sugar Pine Road. I've been up here a number of times in the last couple of years. I think you all know me and where I stand on this project. I'm standing up here again, not to repeat myself, but just to ask you to really look at what Weed wants to be. What do you want to be known as? I've been up here, I've, I've told you what I believe in, what I don't believe in, and I remember being up here asking to have a better vision of that area. Why not involve the college? Why not involve the students, do an interpretive site, do a wetlands area? Bring people to Weed, do a visitor's center, have something on that west side that brings people to us because of our beauty. I agree with what's been said tonight, the inadequacies of the EIR. I don't want it on the west side, but I can't stand up here and tell you that I think it's okay to put it on the east side. There's infrastructure over there, yes. Would it be, maybe be better over there? You know what? I don't think so. It's the same thing. Shouldn't be over on the east side either. I spent some time over on the east side. I don't like to go over there very much, it's sort of dangerous with the road, it did get fixed a little bit. There's some bushes issues with driving out there on the intersection, the garbage is horrible. The people on the streets begging has gotten worse, the trucks idling and standing there, I can't get up and down South Weed, I go the opposite direction. I don't think the east side is a great idea. I think that we need to have a bigger, better vision of Weed. I love it here. I've spent more than eighteen years out in Hammond, I think it's a beautiful area. We have issues with the road, Love's is talking about all these things that they've changed to make this compatible. It's not compatible. Nobody's talking about the issue of our road. No, I mean, I have, here I have the road counter from two years ago, high number, three hundred and eighty-six cars on a given Wednesday, that's one day up and down, a one-mile dirt road section, that is not taken care of by the city or by the county, it's all of us residents. And I agree with the woman that was up here before, we are Weed. We may live in Hammond, but we are this community, and I feel like we contribute. Please, think about this decision. It'll be there forever.
Neil Hyman.
Neil Hyman, sixteen sixteen Maple Drive. Before I read this, I want to rebut something Mr. McKinley said, which is, if you look at all the towns between here and Sacramento, every town that's a tourist destination or a traffic destination, Corning, Williams, they're all on one side of the road. In fact, in Corning, I believe there are three truck stops on one side of the road, maybe two, I'm not sure about the third. All right, so that, so that he's in act, the only town that I can think of between here and Sacramento that is, has business on both sides is Orland, and they have a couple of gas stations about ten miles outside of town on the other side of the road. Now, back to this. Like many, I actually think that Love's could be an asset to this town, it's just that the site they chose happens to be a site of great negative impact. I admit, I may not be up to date on all the changes, because this thing is constantly changing, but I believe that the EIR is inadequate. I think you should process it properly. The public has rightly repeatedly pointed out significant impacts that have continued to be ignored. If you really want this project, why would you give the opposition lawyers ammunition by not revising the EIR to address these easily mitigated impacts? For example, the EIR, as everybody's pointed out here tonight, does not, refuses to recognize the project impacts on South Weed Boulevard. This issue has been raised over and over again. This is a significant impact, but you can easily mitigate it. Just re-engineer the intersection, require a median strip, or some such, so that you can't drive, go from Love's onto South Weed Boulevard. Now, here's an aside, you got a new sign, at least the EIR recognizes that that's an unmitigated significant impact. Okay. I was actually shocked when I found out at the last planning commission meeting, that none of the planning commissioners, none of the city staff, and none of the EIR preparers had any idea of the average traffic volumes at the Vista intersection. How can you prepare and certify an EIR without knowing such basic information? By the way, after midnight for your information, by my own survey, it's near zero. So why do we flood that intersection with light? I'm talking about both sides of the road, when there's no business, nobody gets off at that intersection between midnight and five AM. Another example, I would call, I wish to call your attention to a map that was published in the Weed Press. Note the location of the extreme fire zones like this one here. It happens to be on or adjacent to the Love's project. Note that the east side, over here, is the lowest fire danger zone in the area. Once again, the level of ignorance on this was appalling. It's an extreme fire danger, is not even identified as an impact. Also, no one on the planning commission, no one on the city staff, and none of the EIR preparers could cite a single example of a commercial project on or adjacent to an extreme fire zone. That can't be three minutes. Okay. So how can you prepare, let alone certify, an EIR without such basic knowledge? By the way, I did manage to identify two such projects, by the way. One is that the entire city of Willets is in an extreme fire zone, and another one is the Middletown area in Lake County. And we know what happened to the last one. In case you don't remember, the town and half of Lake County burned down in the third largest fire in the history of California. And yes, it was started by an electrical fault at a small commercial development in Cobb. You cannot validly certify this EIR without addressing the extreme fire danger.
Dan Axelrod.
Dan Axelrod, Hammond Ranch. Oh, Hammond, oh, the exact address, I don't think that's legally required.
Mine, disco park.
Okay. I just wanted to emphasize that this city planner, just in response to a question from the mayor, speculated, only speculated, that the truck stop developments on I-5 are found on both sides, straddling I-5. This is actually incorrect. On Road Eight in Dunsmere, it's east side only, South Avenue in Corning is east side only, Knighton Road, south of Redding, is east side only, near Orland, west side only. So in rural areas in California on I-5, almost all, perhaps all, large truck stops are found only, on one side only. Two-sided is not typical, and in fact, is unusual. But in general, I wanted to say that Weed is a very special place. It's not special because it's small, or because it's relatively poor. Weed is special because of its unique and spectacular scenery. Mount Shasta on one side, the highest peak in the Klamath Range on the other side, and that's a special feature that we should preserve and enhance and advertise, so why put a truck stop where it degrades our best feature, its scenery? Love's says that the truck stop does not degrade the scenery. So I want to quote from the EIR. The EIR says, "The building and structures of the proposed project provide a visual foundation for the wooded hillside and increase compositional harmony." It's a BS, but it's very poetic. Is this a joke? It is good to see that the EIR authors, selected by Love's, have a sense of humor. They essentially say that something ugly is actually beautiful, because a visual foundation is provided, has compositional harmony. But maybe this is not a joke. Maybe Love's EIR authors just have a really low regard for our ability to distinguish ugliness from compositional harmony, and a low regard for our ability to recognize what makes our community special. Now, assuming that Love's truck stop will happen, why not at least put it on the east side? That way, freeway businesses can be encouraged while still preserving the unique scenery and specialness of this area. Thanks.
Rebecca Sluss.
Rebecca Sluss, seven eight three one Sugar Pine Road. Still don't get used to being up here, I've been up here a lot, unfortunately. It's kind of, it's a real, it's, I don't know, it's really sad. I walked away from the planning commission meeting last month, and just really dejected, and not feeling very heard, so, but I thought I would go over some of the things that I've learned, because I know you know how I feel. So I've learned through this process- So I've learned through this process that the city of Weed doesn't have a lot of criteria for planning. Like we don't have, you know, limits on sign height and square footage. I think that's important. I think there's a lot of things that we could do to better plan our future. So that's, I would ask you to consider too, what kind of town you want to be, and that has to do with planning. I've learned that sensitive receptors are people, and I'm one of them. And, you know, and it wasn't really mentioned, I didn't see it in the EIR, but air density and foliage, you know, that affects, that affects sound travel. So, you know, in the winter, we hear a lot more noise from the freeway, and I don't know that the noise studies looked at that. They did change it to look at open windows, but I think things will be louder in the winter just because of the colder air. Sound travels, you know, farther then, so I want to put that in there. I learned that the roads in Weed often aren't wide enough, you know, to the new standards, and they don't include a lot of sidewalks. So I'm really concerned about, and I did, I stated that in the comments, but foot traffic, if Love's does go in at the proposed location, there'll be, there will be foot traffic, you know, across to grocery outlet and the east side to services because people are going to want to go over there. They see a lot of truck drivers stopping and grocery outlet shopping. And also I learned that about 10% of Weed walk to work. There was a traffic study, you know, as part of the general plan. And so if there's 32 to, I don't know, 50 employees, that could be three to five people walking to work. There's no sidewalks in that area. And there's a little sidewalk being planned to go in, but what about the people walking from South Weed, you know, up by the housing? And I learned about buyer retention swales, that the EPA recommends regular maintenance, and I asked about that in my comments, and I didn't really feel like I got a firm answer of how often they will be maintained and monitored so that there won't be overflow with weather. So, I learned about asphalt maintenance, you know, that there's a road traffic, a road study, and I don't think that it's been done yet in Weed. It needs to be done. Our roads are in bad condition, especially in South Weed. So, and I'm concerned about more truck travel. Who's going to pay for that in the future? Drinking water, we've all been learning a lot about that, and I'm concerned about usage of water, having enough water for people. Shoot, I have more wastewater treatment plant as well. So please, my new motto, if this goes through, is Weed, anything goes. So let's not do that. Thank you.
Is it Anka?
Hi, thank you for listening. I'm Anka Sierra. I live at, where do I live? 7834 Sugar Pine. And I moved up here from the Bay Area about two years ago, and I moved up here because I love how beautiful it is up here. And I waited one year to get a home in Hammond Ranch because I love Hammond because it's so beautiful. If I had known that you're putting in this monstrosity close to where I live, I would have never bought a home here. I wouldn't have bought a home. So you tell me how the resale value is going to go for all the people that live in this community when this truck stop goes in and they all want to sell their homes because nobody wants to live near this. I have a kid. My kid, when I drive out to go to the freeway right now, it's lovely. I see beautiful land, but I see transients, I see garbage. I see tons of garbage on the sides of the exits that haven't gotten picked. I've lived here six months. The same garbage is sitting there for six months and it hasn't moved. You tell me that more traffic coming in here, people who don't think, they don't live here, they don't give a shit, what are they going to do? They're going to leave the garbage? Where's that going to go? I hear the traffic from where I live. I hear the traffic from where I live. 97 idling trucks and you tell me that they're going to idle for five minutes? Who is going to enforce the five minutes? The city police can't enforce the five minutes. The state police aren't going to come in and enforce five minutes. In the wintertime, when it's cold and these truckers want to keep warm, how long do you think they're going to keep those trucks idling for? And all of us have to listen to that? I'm not happy about that. I'm not happy about this. You're turning the town of Weed into a truck stop. I've already thought that it was bad enough when I came up here, that it looked, the east side looked like kind of a trashy truck stop area. Now you're going to turn the west side into that. You want to impact a whole community that lives there. Nobody wants you. You say that Love's cares and wants, and you care about the community. What part of us not wanting you here do you not get?
Excuse me.
To you. Okay, I'm sorry. I grew up in New York. I get a little. I get a little adamant or a little feisty, fiery, feisty. I don't think it's a good idea. I think Weed is a very cute town. You could turn Weed into a cute college town. Marin is super cute. Lots of the towns are cute, and they have all kinds of commerce that have come in. You could bring in the same kind of thing. Give the, like somebody suggested, somebody suggested, give it to the community college. Let them come up with a better idea for you.
Tom Neal.
My name's Tom Neal. I live at 7700 Sugar Pine Road. Moved to Mount Shasta in 1968. This December 15th, I'll have my 50-year pin. And I've lived on Sugar Pine since 1984. We bought our first lot out there. We've been out there 34 years. And just the one thing I'm going to bring up, instead of beating a whole bunch of things, is just the traffic. I worked for the city of Mount Shasta for some 12 years in Public Works, doing traffic and sewer and water and the whole nine yards. And I've drove for Suzer Ready Mix for about 12 years and some other offices around the county here, Donarix and Shell and Cross Petroleum. And I finished up my career with Caltrans on Highway 97 for the last 16 years. So I know a little bit about traffic, and it's just my opinion, I'm not a professional. But when we plow underneath Vista, we only have three lanes, one each way and one in the center. And if we get six inches of snow or more down there, it's, it's a mess. There's no place to put the snow. If this goes in, you're going to need five lanes underneath there, two each way, and turn lane in the center, in my opinion. If anybody remembers, the southbound on-ramp at Oasis Road in Reading was real short. They took that slope bank back and made a straight wall with concrete so they could lengthen that on-ramp and make it safe. In my opinion, they'll have to do the same thing at South Weed at Vista underneath there, make straight walls and to get their five lanes. And then South Weed Boulevard, 55 mile an hour traffic going northbound down to a sharp little 25 mile an hour corner coming into the residential area there, already has red curbs on the southbound side where there is no parking because it's so narrow. And going north past the church there, and there's quite a few little homes and some apartments, and the people have to park up on the curb and the sidewalk to, so the northbound traffic can get by their vehicles safely. And you can't hardly do 25 miles an hour through there. There's lots of children, bicycles, basketballs rolling out in the street and stuff. I drive that road frequently. And I just don't know if we're going to be able to have enough room on South Weed Boulevard to make the traffic problem go away, whether it's a truck stop or an Albertson's or Walgreens. I don't know. And then there's Sugar Pine Road, which is supposed to be, well, it is a privately owned road. We all, all the property owners own to the center of the road. And it should be closed, in my opinion, at the old cattle guard, where the old cattle guard is. And if it's not closed, I get it. There's paved roads off every interchange on I-5 from Canada to Mexico, and it should be on our side too, probably. So the county and the city need to shake hands on that road and either close it or make it open to everybody.
My name is Geneva Omen. I live at 2536 Mule Deer Drive in Weed, California. And yes, that's in Hammond Ranch, but that does not mean that I am not totally invested in the community of Weed. I volunteer with the Community Resource Center and with other groups that are concerned about protecting the city's water rights and education for our children. I'm invested, I'm invested. I care, and there's a room full of people here who care about the Weed community and are also invested. I want to address the appeal from Love's. I find it very interesting that they would appeal a decision that was in their favor. But I want to point out that the appeal was because they wanted to make some changes to mitigation, mitigation measure 3.8-1, which has to do with greenhouse gas emissions, and the condition of approval number nine, as that is what it says in their appeal letter. Well, condition of approval number nine has nothing to do with greenhouse gases. It has to do with hazardous materials. And so none of the rest of their appeal discusses anything about hazardous materials. If that's a typo, I find it really frustrating that more attention to detail is not being paid by, by the applicant and their consultants. I think, I made, I wrote a letter, I also work with, we advocate thorough environmental review, and I wrote a letter on behalf of our organization. I emailed it about mid-afternoon, so I brought hard copies in case you haven't seen that. I won't address all the other, the other issues that I addressed in that letter, but I do want to just make some general concluding remarks. So I think, you know, given the amount of public concern there has been about this project, given that the EIR is poorly written and lacks much substantiation of claims as indicated by the many public comments, written comments, and public verbal comments that have been made, that, given that three entities have filed appeals to the planning commission's approval, and that in submitting the appeal of its own approval, Love's appears to agree that the study has been inadequate, inadequately completed, that the apparent rush to push this project through, through this entire environmental review process has become so haphazard, it is extremely difficult for any of us to understand what the program actually means. I would recommend that the city council reverse the planning commission approval, send the EIR back for a real thorough revision, addressing many valid comments that have been made, and then recirculate that document for another 45 days so that the public and the respective agencies have the opportunity to comment again and evaluate the project. Thank you. Geneva, and thank you, thank you very much for all your time. You do volunteer, because I know you do volunteer in town.
My name is James Gabetta. Reside at 202 Woodridge Court. The 14 fire, or 15 fire took care of my house. I decided to rebuild in Weed because I had a little faith that the community may want to grow again. And I think it's time that we grow again. Now, I've looked through the whole room, and maybe somebody can raise their hand. Maybe someone can, I'm sorry, sir. Maybe somebody, you can have somebody raise their hand that they voted for you other than I and that gentleman over there. I see only two voters in Weed. Now, I feel that if you don't do this truck stop, you might as well fold your tent and let the Weed win take you away because you ain't got nothing else. And anybody that'll try to make you believe that is either an idiot or doesn't know Weed, California. I have been involved in this community for 10 and a half years in your chair. I got recalled, and you know what? It woke me up. It made me aware of what we need to do in this town. We need to stand on our own. Not what Hammond Ranch wants. They only want to protect their little kingdom. They don't want what's good for your community. When we had a viable business, there was no school lunches at Weed Elementary. 98% of Weed Elementary receives a school lunch now. Let's get some jobs back. Thank you very much. And I want to say this, if you don't support it, we should recall you.
Okay, so after all of that, I want to thank everybody for their comments. And I think we'll look at a rebuttal from the project proponent. Now is the time, you had, you said you might want to speak again.
Tim Van Dyke, 3153 East, 1250 North, Layton, Utah. Come on, step there. Kind of going back through some notes that I made. I'd like to respond to a couple of them. Some were already written down, others that maybe question my company and my own work ethics integrity or stuff, but that's okay because no one knows my personal business except for myself and my family. The chemical end of this, I hear a lot about chemicals cause all the deaths, leading cause of deaths in the country. I'm not sure that that's real accurate, but again, the chemical, we're not making the chemicals, we're selling them, and we're selling them in the safest method in the country. We've got the best tanks, the best lines, the best sensors, everything to make sure that nothing goes wrong. So again, the vehicles are on the road, they use petroleum products, it's going to go on for a long time. We're just dispensing it in the place that's the safest and the right place. So again, all these different fire dangers and stuff, I haven't read yet, and I did a lot of research, that no truckers have started a fire in California. No truckers have started a fire in California. The number one cause is humans. Campfires, people not being careful. Second is electrical. California has had fires from one end to the other, and that's sad. But I don't know that that's something that was caused by Love's. Air pollution, again, the trucks from 2010 on have to fall within California specs, the toughest regulations out there. And otherwise, they can't get on the roads. So all the trucks from 2010 forward fall- So all the trucks from 2010 forward fall under the emissions dictated by your state. So I think all that goes out the window, because their emissions are less than the The smell of a truck stop versus a pig farm, I'm not sure how we correlate that, but I don't think anyone would be real happy if there was a pig farm in the middle of town. That's why the farmers are outside of town. But again, we're where we should be off of the interchange. The interstate's not going away. The commercial designation is appropriate for interchanges. Maybe not in your neighborhood, but there's many interchanges throughout the country that have travel centers, gas stations on both sides. I've seen them. A lot of that's dictated on utilities and a lot of things that go into our site selection, but we have tried to shove ourselves in the corner the very best that we can of a commercial property, and made it as tight as we can, considering we have multiple businesses that could have been spread out all through that commercial area instead of just on one acreage. I'd like to also address the traffic comments that were made, and I'll need a little help from Aaron in our civil engineer, just to address a couple from the Teppster Henderson person. I apologize, I forgot your first name.
Thank you. Aaron Oliver, civil engineer for Loves, business address at 979 North Blackstone Street in Tulare, California. A couple of comments were raised, and I just want to help inform Council decision-making here tonight. One was on the trip generation, and another was on the mix of automobiles and trucks in the traffic analysis. So first of all, trip generation is more or less forecasting a traffic that's going to arrive at the site, and that traffic is accordingly assigned to different intersections to analyze those impacts. That said, it's a very big driver and very significant in the overall outcome of a traffic study. Loves, in response, actually, coincidentally, had been performing their own in-house traffic study, analyzing six of their own existing facilities in California, and they did this by video recording for three consecutive days at these drive approaches to ensure the traffic forecast that they're using is accurate. And this information is in the final EIR reference, and it shows that the draft environment impact report did in fact overestimate the traffic impacts. Further, a point that Pilate and their council has made and their traffic engineer is that we should use point-of-sale data to sort of estimate traffic impacts. And point-of-sale, of course, referring to transactions that occur in the facility, whether it be a fast food, transaction of purchase of fuel, convenience store item, or simply people could use a restroom, which doesn't register a point-of-sale. So our contention is that this is a really unreliable way to forecast the traffic impacts associated with this sort of development, and a much better way is to actually use real hard numbers surveyed from existing Loves facilities, which of course is a brand in of itself. Secondly, a point was made that the mix of automobiles and trucks was not accounted for in the traffic study. This is inaccurate. The software that is used to analyze traffic impacts is called Synchro and Simtraffic. And when a traffic study's performed, the first thing it has done is a number of study intersections are selected, and traffic, existing traffic counts at those intersections are, that data is collected, so we know how many trucks at any given intersection. Say there's 10 vehicles, and there's five trucks and five automobiles, so you have a 50% mix. That same percentage of mix of trucks and automobiles is then applied to the forecasted traffic. So if there's an increase of, you know, 10% or what have you in the given volume, that same mix of both automobiles and trucks is accounted for in the study. So, and then, you know, one last comment that was made about the east side of, developing on the east side there. The intersections of Shastina and Vista, and also Blackbeet and Vista, those levels of services at those intersections are readily sort of on the threshold of unacceptable. And you could reasonably conclude that moving the travel stop to that side would degrade those levels of service, and would in fact have more traffic-related impacts associated with that side. Thank you very much.
I'll just continue real quick with a few of the other comments I'd like to just address. That the music playing on the islands at Corning is not atypical of a Loves, but I'll The alternate site, I'd like to just clarify again a little bit, that this keeps coming up, throw it on the east, throw it on the east, and I've been doing this for 12 years, and it's not that easy. You have a lot of variables to look at to find the site that works, that's got the proper zoning, roads that access it easily. But one thing that I can tell you, Aaron mentioned again, is I took pictures this afternoon at 2:45 of all the trucks on the east side on all the roads, and October 3rd's meeting, watched as a kid darted through the trucks. I certainly feel that your problem on the east side doesn't go away, but it will be relieved dramatically by having a Loves on the other side to take some of that pressure off. So I hope that that's taken in consideration, and that the job piece that I have mentioned before is kind of important for most communities in America today, and I hope that you consider our site. Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing, and the City Council will discuss. Anybody want to start? Okay, you can hardly wait, I know. Can I use a restroom? Hold on. Get a motion?
Mr. American, I'll make a motion that we take a two-minute break.
I'll second. All in favor?
We better say three minutes, use a restroom. Restroom break.
Restroom break, three minutes. Sorry.
You're on time.
Don't go too far.
I am pissed.
Okay. Call the meeting back to order.
Just for the record, there was a mention of a report to the Planning Commission, from the Planning Commission, that wasn't given. Well, it is in the, for the record, it's right here in the...
It is in the packet, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's, it actually has a list of exhibits. Exhibit A is the staff report, and Exhibit B is the statement of overriding consideration. So it's right here, and it's right immediately previously, right before the staff report, so...
And also in the staff report, there is a list of the timing of events and postings as well? Is that correct?
I don't know.
There is.
Yeah, I didn't compose this, City Planning Director...
I don't ask questions unless I kind of know an answer.
Exactly. Well, anyway, just want to make sure that everybody knows that that is there. Section 18, 18.32.120B.
Okay, Council, we need to keep our microphones on for discussion? Does it have to be open-open? Does it matter?
Yes, it has.
Has to be open comments, right, from us? Okay. Anybody want to start, or shall I start?
I will.
Okay.
I volunteered to start.
You volunteered.
Okay. I'm going to start with, I moved here 25 years ago. I was raised in Redding, and I moved to Redding in 1965, when my dad got a job with what was then the Division of Highways for the state of California. It's now Caltrans. And he was a right-of-way agent, so he bought the property for the state from Sacramento to the Oregon border to put in I-5. So I can remember as a kid, when I was eight, going to Wyrica, and there was no I-5 going there, so I'm pretty sure they just gave me Dramamine and hit the road. But as a 10-year-old, I understood, because of living in Redding and knowing what Hilltop Drive was going to be, and some of these other exits that were on I-5, that every exit on I-5 was going to be a commercial, it was a commercial area. Why would it not be, they wouldn't have put an exit there. They're not going to put an exit off a freeway to go to a, to go to a neighborhood. I mean, they will, but they don't. They're commercial exits. I wrote down some of my thoughts on some of the things that were said tonight. Somebody mentioned other revenue sources. I think this council will agree with me, and there's probably some people in the audience that will agree with me, we have been looking for revenue sources, and it's not easy. And some of the people, some people that mentioned revenue sources, I don't, I haven't seen them at our City Council meeting with suggestions. There was, it was mentioned about trash cleanup. I also don't see people volunteering for that. I see a lot of people that will volunteer down in Mount Shasta for the, all the events that the Rotary puts on and people put on down there. I don't, I don't see people coming to us and say, can I help you with that? And there are, besides, that is a beautiful area, I admit, that's a beautiful area. I have a friend that's buying a home down there. There are other beautiful areas in Weed, and if you haven't been to my backyard, then One of the things that I also wrote down is, people talked about that the streets are bad, the roads are bad. I know, I drive, I live here. I drive on the roads. I was all over town today, three times. And if we don't have tax money coming in, we can't get the roads fixed. We could leave the roads like that and not have tax money coming in, but that's what will happen. If there's, if we don't have, if we don't have tax money coming in, and I understand that there's, oh, taxes on our home, but that goes to the county. We don't get, the city doesn't get that much. If we don't have tax dollars coming into our community, we're not going to have a fire department. We, we have a new fire truck because of some extra money we have coming in. It doesn't just happen. We've got to have that, that tax base. Orland does have a station on both sides of the road. I stop there often. They have a pilot on one side, and they, I don't know what the other one is, but I do stop at the Shell when I go down there, because those are my favorite ladies that work there. And I have been assured that if trucks are driving on South Weed Boulevard, they will be sighted, because they have been before. And this is the thought that's been in my head most of the time. There was a, there was a private man, we got to meet him tonight, I have never met him, that had a piece of property, that was a piece of commercial property, and he sold it to a company. I'm not real sure how much I can say about, to tell him, no, you can't sell to them, because we don't like them. That's his, that's, this is America. He can do that. Just the same as, and I've said this before out loud, we have no right at all whatsoever to put a fence on Sugar Pine Road, because once a government entity starts to put a fence on a private road, there's a whole new set of issues. So he has a right to sell to them, and they have a right to buy it, and it's a commercial piece of property. Now, do we, as a council, should we make sure that when they say some of these things they've said they're going to do, the lights that shine down, they better shine onto the thing, onto the parking lot, not look like they could land an airplane there? They, if they're only cutting 145 trees and they're adding 137, I will be happy to go down and count, because I can do that. Make sure that what they say they're going to do, that they do. And that's, there's, that's, those are just part of my, part of my feelings.
I'm always appreciative, as was my field, listening to comments from people from different views. What I don't think is healthy is when it gets personal, or when people say that, comment was, we made a one-day decision for Weed. And I grew up here, you may know my story, I was adopted from LA at three years old. My parents brought me here. So to say that I made a one decision about a place where I have been living, that's not true, and you don't know me. So you can't put that decision-making on it. And there were some things, and I'm taking note of that, because it's speaking that we make decisions that aren't thinking about Weed. You may not agree with them, as I said four or five years ago about the marijuana policy, and look what happened. California State passed it, and look what happened, we have to deal with it. And people said, yes, states, I know your view, but you voted to what we say as a community. I think we need to look at Mr. Gubeta, I, he's real. I like his comments, because he goes right to the heart. And he worked with my dad, my dad was on the first African-American councilperson years ago. And what Mr. Gubeta said kind of stuck me, and he says, you know what? How are we helping Weed be better? You may not agree in those steps, but I talk to youth daily. I've been back 10 years almost, and there's nothing here for them, so when I see something that's going to bring some jobs that they're possibly going to be a part of, you better believe I'm going to vote for it, because that's bringing income, as my colleague said, to the city. We need to look at, what is the city of Weed having for people that are here? We have income deficits, we have different pay perspectives, but what are we doing as a whole to bring Weed better? You may not agree with some of the businesses that may come here, but it gives people off that I-5 to South Weed or Central Weed, or even North Weed and coming back, that's businesses for the town, that's money that goes into our town, and we need that. I've been talking about my street, you're talking about streets. I remember when my street was blacktopped, when I was in eighth grade. I was so happy, mama, we have, we have blacktopped streets. They haven't been fixed since then. So you think I'm not thinking about streets? They're patching them, but we need money to do these type of things in the city. And you're not going to be able to agree with everything that we agree upon, and I understand that, that's just how choices go. Some choices work, and choices don't. But I think, we look at what's best for the city. And my first thought was, interjecting, when the pills were written, and they said that they weren't responding to, but I looked into the response, and they were responding to, you may not agree with the response, but they responded to, you have to, you have to just go with it. If you weren't, if you weren't appealed, I'm not appealed, but if you weren't getting your information, but you have your view, sometimes you'd have to accept that. That's how life is. You don't get everything your way, just because you want it. But what's the best? And I think that, looking at the best for the city, that's how I feel, and that's why I'm back here. My mom and dad are gone to heaven, but they came here in 1946, and they fought for everything that could be, and they said, stand up for what you believe in. So you may not agree with what I, what I say, but I appreciate your views, it gives us stuff to think about, so we make right decisions. And I'm still looking at the possibility, and we never know what the future is going to hold. And to say, someone said earlier, I was at some of the hearings, and someone said, the lighting out there is just dark. That is so not true. I go out there with a friend almost all the time, and you can see the beautiful mountain, the blue skies and stars. So that picturesque view is not taken away of now, as some people are saying. That's not true. So they go out there. So we need to be honest about something. That's all.
You want me to be nice. Okay, so...
Okay, so I remember when Sue's dad came here. I didn't know him then, but at that time, the highway went right through the middle of town. Same as it did in Mount Shasta, same as it did in Corning. Corning has all their truck stops on one side of the road. But before that freeway went in, they weren't there. They were on both sides of the road because it was the highway. We had a truck stop out at South Weed. They had one at Truck Village Drive. We kind of had a partial one in Mount Shasta with the Jerry's thing there. And then all that stuff went away. And like Sue said, there are people beating down our doors to bring industry to us. And I understand where you're coming from. And I know that you're here trying to change our mind and make us realize what it's going to do to one part of town personally. But at the same time, we want that same courtesy. So if you've lived here for 30 years and you are a part of this community, as you say, then how come this is the first time we've ever seen you? Why are you not getting involved in other stuff? If there's garbage on the road and it's bothering you, pick it up. Or find out who the landowner is. You don't have to rely on the city to take care of everything. And I know, I'm sure that you guys did not realize when you were all speaking that that is a beautiful area out there, and there's no other beautiful area in town, was said. We are ignorant if we believe what somebody's telling us. I was writing these down. That we're all poor in Weed. And then the last one was that we're trashy. And so if you don't think that those were said, we all have them written down.
This is not for a discussion for you, and you can be removed if you don't stop.
Okay, but you're lying.
Okay, then if we're going to silence or otherwise remove him. I don't want to put up with it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Did you hear the same things?
Yeah. I respect what everybody said. I respect the people that have come out. I really do. And I try not to cop an attitude, but first of all, Mr. Nelson is entirely right regarding the trash. You know, I personally go out and pick up trash. I do, I do, I do, I do. And I pick up some ungodly things. And we have to do something about that, and we will. And I appreciate the concern there. I think, you know, the comment made regarding selling out the community, to me, that's a low regard for our responsibility here. I think it's a low regard. I think that there's a, there are things, items of Weed regarding, our median income is $24,000 a household. Now, that doesn't leave much leeway to raise taxes, to take care of the revenues for this community, to take care of the roads and things. As I think what Sue said regarding the options, well, there's a lot of options, but I haven't heard any real options. I want to, regarding moving, when I hear what's moved Loves to the East Side, I'm sorry, to me, that just shows low regard for the people of Hidden Meadows. That's what it shows me. We don't want it, we'll put it over there. There was a lot of little things, but I think making this decision, and first of all, I think that it's really an analogy is the time we put into this study, and we put some time in. A lot of reading, a lot of questioning, a lot of patience. And comparing what this project is compared to what was put into when Pilot was first built, it's like talking about smoking cigarettes in the '50s and '60s compared to now. We know a lot more now than we did before. We've taken time to have these issues mitigated. And Loves has tried to, it hasn't come in and just steamrolled through. There's been a lot of concern about this. But I want to say this, and I'll finish with this, is that, to me, there's a, either we've done such a poor job, I listened to you, such a poor job doing this project, or this may be the proverbial, "Throw as much crap on the wall as you can," and maybe something will stick. And I think, you know, there's, like, I want to reiterate, we put a lot of time and energy in this, and we do have a responsibility to keep the services for the people of Weed. And when you have an income or median income like we do, and I don't think anybody that spoke tonight understands that or sympathizes with the community we have. We're doing the best we can with our community, but we happen to have, you know, we have 1,500 jobs in Weed? 1,500 jobs in Weed? Out of the highest, the high income, most of those people don't live in Weed. They don't pay taxes in Weed. But that's what's happened to our community. And we have an obligation to try to change this and turn this around. And the first thing we have to do is make sure that we can afford the services that are not going to go down. They're not getting any cheaper. That's not going to happen. We have a fiscal responsibility here that I really, really feel that many of you just disregard, thinking you know. So I approve of the project, and I do appreciate your input though because I do think your concerns have made it a better project. Thank you.
I get to go last. I do want to thank you guys all for showing up. I do believe your input has created a little bit better project. It's not Nirvana, but it is a project worth our consideration. We, your comments have reduced or actually helped mitigate possibly some greenhouse gases, possibly some pollution. I believe this project will also create a better traffic flow. I am not a traffic expert, but I don't think it requires one to take a look at what's going on out there and say that it's not congested. We actually have been trying to mitigate the traffic and the parking situation for a number of years. We've done such things as lease property from property owners so we could have a place to place trucks. That has not worked. So we still have them all over the street. I believe the Loves project will help remedy that situation. The traffic also, we have, if nobody is aware, not everybody loves to come to our council meetings, but we have a new whole, Vista is going to be laid in about 18 inches of concrete all the way from, I believe from Vista to, what's the name of the road?
Chastina.
Chastina. So I believe a light is going to be going in. Is that correct, Keith?
I have no information on that.
That one, okay. I think we've met some resistance on the light, possibly from Caltrans or somebody. But anyway, we're working on a light for that area. If the roadway needs to be widened, I'm glad that one person brought up the fact that possibly we could straighten out the walls of the underpass and create it. That's a good thought. The fact that traffic coming up South Weed Boulevard, I don't think that's a reality. Putting in a find Loves today won't bring you anywhere. There's nothing there. But if you want to find Sugar Pine, you can find Sugar Pine exactly by the way the video showed. It'll take you straight to Sugar Pine. So that's not really a fair comparison in any way. Light has been mitigated. I think that was a good thing, and I think that came from this part of this audience to make sure that we have a dark sky, whatever that thing was called, that that was a good idea. So as to minimize if there is an impact on the dark skies, that will keep it to a minimum. This council cannot fix what is already there. So what we're left with is creating, making what we can have happen, happen. We just can't go backwards and tell Pilot or we can't tell any other of the businesses on that street, including the high signs, that they can't do that anymore. It's something we have to kind of live with it until we have a chance to maybe mitigate it somewhere farther down the road. But we can't do it now. The effects on Main Street business, that's not really accurate. The Main Street businesses are dying now. Adding Loves certainly won't do anything else. We're, as the city council, have been working hard on that. But it's nothing that Loves will have an impact on. Not in my belief. Noise. I live right up by the college. I hear noise all the time. It's something, it is what it is. But I also am a city dweller. I've lived in the city all my life, so I'm expecting noises. I expect my neighbor's noise. I actually have a neighbor that has a semi. He drives a tractor up there. Ah, if he kept his yard up, I would be even happier. But besides that, I only hear it one time. He starts it up. It's idling, I don't hear it at all. And I sleep with an open window, and he's 25 feet away. He's got to say. And I don't smell the fumes because it's a pretty new truck. And those things are better than my wife's pickup. So signage, I think that Loves actually reduced the size of the signage. I think that's a good thing for this council to consider. I would prefer about 25 feet, but there's no point in having a sign if it's 25 feet, right? But I do believe that mitigating it down to a 90-foot level was a great idea or a great proposal. I believe that dropping the size is also a great proposal. I did hear the drainage issue. The drainage issue has been addressed. The only thing that kind of leaves open is to make sure that it's monitored. And I believe the North Coast, whatever it is, is in charge of that. And we have a couple other large acronyms that also pay attention to those things. But again, the city does have some control. I do believe that there is growth on both sides of an interchange, and that is typical. It may not be 100%, but it is typical. There is land that's beyond Loves, it's owned commercial, so potentially, this is the first stop. And I'm not sure what to tell you, there will be others. We have proposals already on some of the East Side. And actually, I believe we have some inquiries to the West Side as well. So not to push too many alarms, but it's a commercial zone, and that's where it's going to be going. The fact on the aesthetics of the parking, it's a gas station. We've asked them to, we want the parking for trucks to get them off the rest of the roadways. I think it fits the bill. I believe as landscape matures, we're making a lot of to-do over nothing. And I think as five years progress, this conversation won't be, won't look so messy, the process at least. And I will tell you that, as you see out here, there's not a lot of our citizenry that actually is here. And when I talk about citizenry, I'm talking about the voters, as Mr. Gobeta would say. And for me, I believe part of that is because, I'm hoping, it's because they trust in our judgment, and the silence is their approval of that judgment. And so I know it's a big thing to ask from this five-person city council to look into the future. I don't think we have a choice here. This council understands that we need to fix roads. We need to buy equipment. We need to pay payroll. City is a business. We have a duty to our citizens. And although you are our neighbors, for most part, out there, I hear your pain, but we do have a responsibility to our citizenry on picking up the chuck holes. We have to build sidewalks. We have trucks to purchase. I know everybody here wants to get a paycheck. So that's our responsibility. And getting money into the coffers of a city, unfortunately, is one of those duties that we have. And so I want to bring back one last thing that I believe some of the council has mentioned, and I try to stay out of the emotional part of this, is that you should be careful about the language you use and the thoughts that you put behind it. Because some of these comments did lend itself to being, to insult your neighbors. They insult city staff, and they insult the city council. So that rubs me the wrong way, big time. I grew up here, a man's word is his bond. I hold to that. And anybody who knows me will tell you 100%. And I don't see anything different from these council members. So what I'm saying to you is the verbiage you use in your complaints, you should tone them, you should reread them, and maybe have a friend of yours reread them. And instead of putting our name on them, maybe you should put your friend's name on them and ask them what they think of you talking to them about in those manners. And with that, I guess I'm done, huh? Put a fork in him. All right. You guys want me to repeat that? Huh? I turned my mic off. Okay. The first item for this council is to consider the following three appeals. The first one we will consider is the appeal from Loves, amending condition of approval, number nine, as set forth in the staff report and mitigation measure 3.8-1, as set forth in the updated mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So for my council, that is the greenhouse gas emissions, that is the lighting. Am I missing something else in that mitigation? I'm sure I am, but...
It's greenhouse, it's to commit to electric charging stations.
Okay, thank you.
And what's the other?
And what's the other?
Greenhouse gases.
Oh, and, yeah, and the five-minute idling restriction.
Five-minute idling and 12 stations or something, wasn't that on there too?
Correct.
Okay.
Charging stations.
Then, I'm still not 100%, but I want to ask a question to our lawyer or legal person. The appeals that have been addressed, or communicated by the public, have they been addressed? Because I'm still hearing today that they weren't. And that's my legal concern, just knowing that when people ask a question, we give an answer. They may not want the answer, but has that been done? Because I see some of the verbiage in the appeals, like for Loves, it has some information what the original appeals were from our meeting, and planning commission meeting. I'm just, that, that's my whole thought process when I see all these letters. Has, so it's a general question, has the appeals been addressed?
They've been addressed by both sides, all of them, yes. Now, this resolution 32-2018 actually incorporates approval or disapproval of those appeals, that section on page, page...
It's on page one.
Page four. So you can, you can take a separate vote on each of these appeals if you wish to, or you can just move the adoption of the resolution. Your choice.
And that will address all the appeals that have come up?
That addresses all the appeals.
Yeah, on page four of the resolution, you see at the bottom, it addresses all of the appeals. You can vote separately if you wish to.
Which page four?
Pardon me?
It's on this one.
You don't have the same page number I do?
I do, I have on the other, I'm sure. Someone... I'm just asking, Mr. Mayor...
It says not therefore be it resolved?
Yes.
After that?
I'm asking because that gives us visibility, that when people say we aren't addressing something, that's either gay or nay. And I'm factual. If we addressed it, I want that in the minutes. So that's, you may not agree with their ruling, but I, I'm just making sure, because we get the different letters, the emails and all that, I want to make sure they were, were addressed as a whole. And if that clause does that...
The resolution covers that, yes.
Covers all of them.
Yeah.
So I guess without further discussion, we could cover all of those bases if somebody wants to move on resolution.
I suggest you waive the reading of the body. Yeah.
I'm used to yelling, okay? Microphones, fancy stuff. So the chair would entertain a motion to read this by title only?
I'll do it. I'll move that the reading be full of the body of resolution number 32-218. Bewave said resolution being induced and adopted by title only.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then I move adoption of the resolution number 32-2018, a resolution of the city, a resolution certifying the final environmental impact report, adopting SEQA filings, a statement of overriding considerations, and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program in improving the Love Travel Stop Project as listed.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, I guess we can adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.